10 o'clock. I will call this Board of Accounting Commissioners' meeting to order. We will start with a salute to the flag. And if Commissioner Andrea Ella could please lead us in it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Clerk, we can now start with roll call.
Alexis Hill, Chair.
Here.
Jeanne Herman, Vice Chair. Mike Clark.
Present.
Marius Garcia.
Here.
Clara Andreola.
Present.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Chief Deputy District Attorney Mary Candace Candaris. And I'm Jen Galassini, your county clerk. Madam, you have a form.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now we'll go into roll call. Oh, you already did it. Thank you. We'll do public comment. Mr. Manager.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments that are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you very much.
Virtual public comment eligible when facilities are available.
Available. Wonderful. Thank you very much, Mr. Manager and Madam Clerk.
We'll start in chambers. We have Cheryl Guinan.
Great.
Followed by Elise Weatherly.
Good morning, Washoe County Commissioners and constituents. Cheryl Guinan, for the record. In Nevada, a domestic abuse offense occurs every 17 minutes and 18 seconds. That status is just one of the many important reasons why I am motivated to stand before you today, to ask this commission to vote in favor of granting a special use permit to Safe Embrace. A yes vote will allow Safe Embrace to serve at their full potential. With the substantial number of at-risk community members experiencing domestic and sexual assault and abuse in our Washoe County, it's a dire need that we have and one that is currently under-resourced. We need to take a step forward for the betterment of our area. Different divisions of our county, our cities and state are already taking bold steps from cracking down and holding offenders more accountable in court to stronger legislation to support prevention of domestic abuse. Not supporting resources already in place to assist victims put greater stress on our current community resources from our court system, homeless shelters, first responders, and nonprofits. It also affects the future success of our county. We also shouldn't ignore the strong local support of community members that have seen the need for Safe Embrace to grow, giving their own money to create fundraisers to support this 20-plus-year-established location to meet and serve Washoe County's growing domestic abuse shelter needs. The truth is, without a victim having a safe domestic abuse shelter to turn to that has a room immediately available to them, we are risking their safety and potentially a community member's life. This would also mean that we would be providing a disservice to the other Washoe County Department objectives to take action against domestic violence in Washoe County. It's harder for them to crack down on abuse if a victim can't leave. I've said it to you once before, and I'll say it again. We cannot afford to decrease our domestic abuse resources. We need to create more. A domestic shelter is an example of light, perseverance, and hope, a strong addition to any neighborhood community. A shelter like Safe Embrace with over 20 years of experience is a key resource here to many brave victims that are taking their first step towards survivor. I know this commission understands that Washoe County as a whole, with our cities and the whole state, need to vote to operate in a manner that acknowledges and supports the goals our community has in standing up to domestic violence abusers. Focusing on the complete picture, we can't tiptoe around domestic abuse because of a stigmatized thinking that survivors or a shelter in a neighborhood is detrimental to that neighborhood. It's just simply not. Commissioners, I'm standing in front of you today, asking to be part of the unified front that stands up against domestic abuse and responsibly uses what little resources we have in this daunting fight. As a survivor, who knows the actual lifesaving power your yes vote carries? And then a no vote is an enabling act which supports an abuser by making a victim's options to leave even harder. I please ask you to make your vote yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Elise Weatherly, followed by Tammy Holdstill.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly. I wanted to start out with something funny. I was parked behind a car that had a little bumper sticker that said, "Keep Reno Awkward." And I thought, oh my gosh, I laughed because I'm doing a fabulous job of that. And it's all about like response, right? Like who gets back to you and who doesn't? So I'm still scratching my head because mediator allowed the bad guys to come in with the first small claims court case that I made in Reno, and I can't get a response as to what she did was wrong. And so I compromised. I shouldn't have done that. So we need to know, I guess, as a community, who we can trust and not, right? I mentioned his name before, Feliciano Velazquez. If you ever need air duct work, he's the man. Donald Trump. I contacted him to say, why did you applaud John MacArthur for not mandating masks in the congregation, right? Because that's kind of like wavery about it. Well, Donald Trump can't tell the difference between a genuine and an artificial believer. He just can't do it. What about HOA, HRHOA? I have asked repeatedly to get, you know, records and violations and removal of certain people and stuff, and they have not responded. So you know what that does? Tom Gordon, inspired amateur productions. You know how many songs we were able to produce out of this HOA nightmare? And it's like, what I've noticed is that people might respect you, some people might, and some people might assault you. It doesn't really matter what you do. You're going to get that same, you know, blame game from people who just don't like you. So what do I base my life on? God opposes the proud and gives grace to the humble. And it's really hard for us to be humble because we've been given a lot of really good gifts, a lot of good talents. So what do I boil that down to? Artificial intelligence. I did not create myself. I did not give myself music. I did not give myself intelligence. I don't think I was there at all when that was taking place. So I just say, thank you, God. And as far as abuse goes, I get it. Do you know what I did? I left my husband, and he wanted to just murder me. He wanted to kill me. Instead, he got back at me by trying to turn my daughter and her son against me. By the way, he kind of won, but he couldn't. Also, I'm going to coin the phrase super duper because we've got some super dupers in politics. They, and I won't mention their name right now, but I will, they have the power to deceive. They dupe, right? Super dupers. So we'll just turn that into a song. And by the way, Christopher Daw here never responded to me, but Judge Chris Wilson gives a thumbs up because I have learned a lot from that man. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy Holdstill, followed by Terry Brooks.
Are you waiting for the documents?
Oh, I didn't see the thing go up. So Tammy Holdstill, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. The water's up. I'm here again. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Herman and Commissioner Clark for their help in everything that they can do. We are requesting the SWS Hearing Board to have a hearing regarding the Swan Lake and the dangers created by the City of Reno and Washoe County sewer facilities for the following reasons. Proof A, the City of Reno used below Class C when they did their sewer plant or did their hay feature to dewater Swan Lake. B, as you see, Swan Lake, the body of the lake, in 2023, has arsenic levels, is below C grade in the affluent quality of the affluent in the water. Number C, there was a press conference regarding the PFAS that are in Swan Lake. When they did that press conference, they decided to neglect the medical waste that is in Swan Lake. Swan Lake is 100% dangerous to human and animal. And as of October 21st, 2023, when I flew home, you can see how high Swan Lake currently is. Now, let's go on to Washoe County Sewer Plant. It is licensed for 9 to 11 evaporation saturation ponds. Do you see 9 to 11 evaporation and saturation ponds? And do you notice the amount of water or affluent that is around that lake? It would be nice if you're paying attention. Also, I have given all of this information to Congressman Amadee's staff, which I have been gotten the runaround on. This is an EPA issue. This is a City of Reno and Washoe County issue. That sewer plant is classy and doesn't belong putting water in the playa. I am very sick of the situation, and that the ungovernable perpetration of the city, the county, and the state and the federal representatives needs to end now. It's time for a hearing from the SWS, and it's time for Washoe County Health to step up to the plate and the city manager to do the jobs to protect the citizens of Lemon Valley. To further go on, this is what Donna Robinson's horse, who was flooded in 2017, now has an issue with the birds. The birds swim in the lake, they turn around, they poop, and hurt.
Thank you.
Terry Brooks, followed by Rick Snow.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. I came here today to address one of the causes I have seen related to homelessness. Real estate values have been increasing at an increasing rate, which means that the cost of rent is increasing at an increasing rate. The cost of living is also increasing in increasing stages and unfortunately increasing more than workers' wages. Rent is now a lot higher here than it has ever been before, and it looks like it will increase even more. That makes the situation quite evident that a lot of people are leaving their homes because they cannot pay the rent. So the homeless problem is going to continue to increase too. So now what are all these people who are homeless going to do? The Hope Springs Bridge Housing Facility has housed a lot of people, and now the Nevada Cares Campus has also housed a lot of people. When people who would be homeless can come together in such a place, they can experience living conditions that they might learn to embrace. I can see why some homeless people might be reluctant to go. But if some of them go there together, then they'll be with people that they know. And if they live in a place that's known by everyone, then they'll have provisions and facilities that are shared by everyone. There, they could be provided with necessities that could include water that is clean to drink as well as a lot of food. It could be a place where they might receive a vaccine, and it might be a place where their clothes they could clean. I'd like to thank Washoe County for all the things they're giving to all the people here who need a little help with living. I'd also like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to coming back when I've got a lot more to say.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
Rick Snow, followed by Katie Nepper.
Good morning. Rick Snow, Washoe County resident. On 11/22/2022, I went to the code compliance to have a problem solved, that 128 Kennedy Drive. They sent me to four different places before I finally got someone who would speak to me, and that was at the manager's office. Couldn't speak to the manager, had to speak to one of his helpers. They didn't like the way I talked, so now I have a restraining order against me because they thought I was out of line. I just called yesterday and followed up on 128 Kennedy Drive. The lady informed me there wasn't a case opened on that. So for one full year while waiting for this to happen, nothing's happened. Back on 11/22 of a year ago, I filled out a witness form that the county gave me. I said I gave all the description of what was going on. I got pictures, paid $20 to have it notarized because that's what they ask you to do, sent it in, and today, nothing's been done. Now we have a case number, so I'll be following that up. So here's the dilemma I'm at. You people send me a tax notice that says this is the taxes you have to pay. Every year it goes up a little bit. I understand we have a cost of living. People that are on a fixed income have a hard time doing that. I don't complain about the taxes I paid. What I do complain about is when I pay my taxes and I'm supposed to get service from the county. When they don't provide the services, that violates our contract. You say, what contract? We have an implied contract when you send me a tax bill and I pay my taxes. So here's my remedy for you. If they're not going to do anything, when I complain, it's a completely different system, and I've complained, and they haven't followed up within a year, I would like that tax money back. So the next time we come in here, I'd like you to have that situation remedied. And if we don't, then I guess we'll have to go the different way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Katie Nepper, followed by Alfred Nepper.
Katie Nepper, I think one of the most obvious ways, and there are many, to show Safe Embrace and Christie Corporation's deliberate effort to deceive everyone is in their application where they said they had 4,100 livable square feet rounded up from their own figures, which actually showed 4,056 square feet. 4,050 square feet is required for 25 occupants, a leeway of only six square feet. From the beginning, we've maintained these figures were inaccurate as we could roughly do the math based on different architectural drawings of the buildings. It wasn't until November 17th, a month after this was supposed to be decided, that building actually went out and measured. Not surprisingly, we were correct. Safe Embrace only has permitted space for 15 occupants since the 532 square feet for Kids Club in the detached building was never permitted as livable. We proved that at the last meeting on October 17th with building's own document from 2018, which we placed on record. The most glaringly obvious falsification is the detached building. It is only 24 by 40, which equals 960, not 1,000 square feet. It has a bathroom of 96 square feet, which isn't livable, reducing the square footage further. Then they threw an inflated figure of 650 square feet for the unheated attached garage Safe Embrace knew was not livable. These aren't small mistakes. They are deliberate. As for planning's report, this reduction makes 25 occupants impossible. This all being said, neither of the detached buildings can be a dwelling unit and therefore not livable space for multiple reasons, which we've already outlined. This is an email attachment Julie sent me showing building's measurements on 11/17. I have written in what Safe Embrace shows for the same areas. Building shows a total interior space of 3,153. However, since the Kids Club was never permitted, it brings the total down to 2,621. In contrast, Safe Embrace shows a total of 4,056 livable square feet, which includes the inflated 650 square feet I mentioned for the garage, to make their figures add up to almost exactly 4,050 square feet, which is required. And here's a copy of Safe Embrace's figures, which Julie presented to the Board of Adjustment, and which she assured them multiple times was correct. Had the board known otherwise, this application would most likely have been unanimously declined since Mr. Pierce said he was relying on Julie's figures.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alfred Nepper, followed by William T. Stewart. And I believe Mrs. Nepper will be speaking for Alfred.
Katie Nepper, speaking for Alfred Nepper. Safe Embrace operated as a group care facility until a license was revoked by court order. There were many problems and incidents during this time since there was no supervision whatsoever at night and no permanent resident to ensure problems could be resolved before they escalated. Imagine you are a female victim of domestic violence with two small children. You would either be placed in the main house, having your own bedroom, but sharing two bathrooms with three other families who are total strangers to you, male or female, or you would be placed in a bedroom with only a bathroom and a doorway directly to the outside, no kitchen. If you had no kitchen, then you and your children would have to go outside through a breezeway area just to get something to eat. How convenient would that be if you or your children weren't feeling well and it was freezing outside? There's a reason Washoe County Code says a dwelling unit has to have a kitchen. There are a few comments at the October 17th meeting we found quite interesting. Ms. Silver, CEO of the Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce, said, quote, "I respect the concerns of neighbors who don't appreciate the Safe Embrace residents located in the quiet neighborhood of their homes, but we have foster homes, drug and alcohol treatment centers, urgent care centers, and residents for distressed youth and adults located throughout our community," end quote. "We do not want an urgent care or drug and alcohol treatment facility in our quiet neighborhood either, nor would anyone living in a single-family residential neighborhood want these types of facilities next door. County codes protect us from this as long as they are followed." Rachel Wright submitted for the October 17th meeting, quote, "I am a resident of Sparks and find it shameful that anyone in this community would try to hinder one of the few domestic violence resources in our county. Safe Embrace should be allowed to provide group care to more than the 1825 occupants listed in this agenda item. While we agree wholeheartedly with Ms. Wright that more resources are needed, these very resources cannot be located in residential neighborhoods in direct violation of codes. Otherwise, what is to prevent Safe Embrace from appearing on this board next year with a crest for 50 or 100? Over the last five years, we have been bullied, vilified, and harassed. One of Safe Embrace's former attorneys threatened to sue us if we didn't sign an agreement, promising never to say their address in any public meeting. In 2018, both Sparks and Washoe County assured us Safe Embrace would remain a group home. Our mistake was believing them. We had no idea they were lying to us. Group homes are allowed in any residential area. Changing a group home into a group care facility is a major change in use. The 12 residential property owners on Ponderosa Drive should be able to enjoy our quiet neighborhood without a contentious commercial compound in the middle of it." Thank you.
Thank you.
William T. Stewart, followed by Valerie Fianaca.
Good morning. For the record, William T. Stewart. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Just obviously want to start off with saying thank you for your public service and hopefully making Washoe County a better place to live and raise families. That being said, I have lots of information about fire because that's kind of what I talk about all the time. So safe, effective, risk-based wildfire response. This is a national cohesive plan through the federal government, and the feds have lots of money. And what I'm asking the commission to do, hopefully today and into the future, is to be able to recoup more money for our local HOAs to be able to provide defensible space, home hardening, and making sure communities don't get wiped out. One of the things that I have in front of you is, here's a history of all the wildfires in and around Washoe County. You can see the green area is Forest Service, and we're surrounded by BLM, going back to the feds. We have, majority of Nevada is owned by the federal government, 81%, I think, in my last talk. And then we talk about risk. So where is the risk? People are moving to Washoe County in droves, California, Texas, all over. We have people coming in all the time. What is a major contributing cause of fires is human-caused fires. 80% of fires are caused by humans. So how can we limit that? It's being proactive. It's making sure we kind of take a trip down memory lane. So back in 2003, then Acting Forester, Tim Rochelle, said, "We need to get involved in FireWise." FireWise is a national program. It's set up through the federal government, and it talks about citizens helping citizens. Not everybody can have a fire truck in the driveway. It's making sure the homeowners know what to do, have a plan, know where to go if there's a fire, and also prevent their houses from catching on fire. I mean, if you drive around Galena, Red Rock, a lot of the areas around in our county, there is nothing but fuel next to their houses. And then once one house goes up in flames, that's a domino effect, and then the wind kicks in, and then guess what happens? A whole community's lost. Because I know, I've been there, and I've been on the front end of trying to save communities. So what's the next section? Oh, I'm running out of time. So we have the RCI that did an inspection back in 2004. After that, we had the Colin Ranch Fire in 2011, all talking about defensible space and how we need to be proactive. Washoe County's Blue River Report that you guys not did, but your previous predecessors did, talks about wildfire and how to prevent it. Tricamelo Strategic Plan, and then also in 2018, adopting new codes. So I'm asking for you guys to get involved, help communities get more money so we can make sure no more communities get wiped out. Thank you for your time. God bless.
Thank you.
Valerie Fianaca, followed by Pam Dar.
Valerie Fianaca, for the record. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and all that. I'm back to talk to you about a subject that I'm sick to death of, and it's our library and our manager, Jeff Scott, in the library. I brought the problem with Mr. Scott, our library manager, to the attention of this board multiple times in the past, in person and at the podium. I've met with several commissioners about this problem. I've shown photos of my injuries I've sustained at Drag Queen Story Hour from the happy, peaceful partners of our center chosen by Jeff Scott. Instead of addressing the problem, Mr. Scott has defiantly doubled and tripled down on his agenda, which is pretty radical. He's brought police filings, he's brought police filings to himself and HR complaints, as well as a lawsuit now to the county. How far should this be allowed to go, is my question. He's up for his review this month. I was called a fascist at a public meeting, at a library board meeting, for using my public comment time to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Let that sink in for a minute. Mr. Scott then allowed an article to be printed about Nazis in the library newsletter, which would have been fine. It was well-written, but it contained a link to my public comment, which I find kind of offensive. At the next library board meeting, the following one, the immediately following one, I was called a communist. So you can see where this is going. I didn't respond to any of it. This is escalation that you should find frightening and should demand an explanation from Mr. Scott for. He started showing up at coffee with the community events hosted by our new board member, Gianna Jacks, either to intimidate her or the community members who might want to share with her. It's highly inappropriate. It would be like Manager Brown showing up at Mike Clark's bike events. This is a man who's totally out of control. I don't know how y'all getting back under control. I don't know how the board gets him back under control, but he's totally out of control.
Pam Dar, followed by Matthew Wilkie.
Hi, Pam Dar. Good morning, Commissioners, and I hope you're having a good day. I just wanted to put something on the record. I feel it's necessary. I have contacted some of the commissioners. Early October, I went to the senior center, and I went into the women's restroom, and in the lounge area, there was a man, like 40-ish, sitting in a chair in the ladies lounge. It shocked me. I'm like, you're not supposed to be there. And I stood still, and I stared at him. It made him so uncomfortable, he grabbed his backpack, got up, and quickly walked out. And I just kind of wondered why he was there. Was he looking for an opportunity? It just didn't seem warm and fuzzy feeling. I called a friend who goes to the senior center, and I asked her, what's going on? That was just weird. She was, I don't know. I showed up this morning, and there was a fistfight between two homeless, and the sheriffs had to be called out. I used to drop my mom off at that senior center sometimes. I never would have felt it was not a safe place. I don't think it's a safe place. I don't think it's a safe place. There is homeless that really need help, that'll take the help. There's homeless going in there that are strung out on drugs. There's homeless going in there that are looking for opportunity to buy the drugs. That's putting our seniors at risk. One person, one senior getting in the way of a fist, you're going to have a broken hip, and you're going to devastate that person's life. This is a health and safety issue. And everybody who has parents, I don't think you would drop them off in that senior center with that concern. I wouldn't. So I want to see the homeless get help. I've worked with the homeless during events when they found themselves in trouble, like Hot August Nights would hire them, and I would be a manager to supervise, and they were great people. But there's ones that have drugs that could be dangerous, some that have mental issues that could be dangerous. They need to get separate help. And what training do seniors have to deal with people who have mental issues? They don't have the experience. You're leaving them vulnerable. So when you say you can't turn them away, I disagree. It's a health and safety issue. So I felt it was necessary to put this on the record, that something didn't happen, and I didn't say anything. So I know it's being discussed, I know people are doing things, but I'm hearing it's still happening. So before a senior gets seriously injured, I think it needs to be addressed quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Wilke, followed by Amanda Bullard.
Good morning, Chair Hill and members of the commission. My name is Matthew Wilke, and I'm here again to talk about houselessness, surprise, and the emphasis of the SEHAB in the community. It is concerning to me that the board has essentially been dissolved, and in my opinion, this hampers the community collaborative in the availability of input for matters. Previously, the board met monthly, providing a consistent platform for community members to come and gather and tackle the issue. However, the frequency was then reduced to quarterly, and now has been reduced to the call of the chair. Unfortunately, the scheduled quarterly meeting for December is not on the schedule. This inconsistency and lack of continuity in the board's meetings is unacceptable. I strongly urge the commission and the SEHAB, I strongly urge the county commission to prioritize the issue of houselessness and ensure that the SEHAB meetings are held more regularly and consistently. The houselessness population in our county requires support and advocacy from all fronts, and the functioning of that board is crucial in addressing the solutions. I implore you to strive for improvement in all areas. We must do better, and I urge you, sorry, I'm a little nervous. Today is also Giving Tuesday, and I also want to express gratitude, so I'm not all bad. So to express gratitude to the commissioners for supporting certain organizations dedicated to assisting those in needs, such as Urban Roots and Options Veterinary Care. So for those of you that donated to those groups, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I encourage all of you to contribute to organizations that resonate to your values and show support to our community. I hear I'm going to be leaving here and going over to Hope's and Hope Springs and donating some books and some other things that they're having a drive for once I leave here. In conclusion, I want the county to prioritize houselessness and ensure regular, consistent meetings of the SEHAB. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Amanda Bullard, followed by Bruce Foster.
My name is Amanda Bullard. I'm the Deputy Director for the Nevada Coalition to End Domestic and Sexual Violence. I'm here to comment in support of Safe Embrace and their special use permit. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak with you today. The Coalition is a statewide agency that provides advocacy, education, and support regarding the intervention, prevention, and response to domestic and sexual violence statewide. Our work is rooted in uplifting the lived experience of victim survivors and advocating for those with their needs of our direct service providers. As such, NCE DSV has been there for Safe Embrace throughout their entire battle regarding the operation of their shelter. To put into words the impact that Safe Embrace has made on this community is impossible. Their advocates work with victim survivors on the worst days of their lives. They keep families safe while they are in fear of their safety, and they work tirelessly to transition victims into survivors. I know you all sit before me with care in your hearts for victim survivors and want to do what's right to support those who have been harmed in our communities. I am confident that approving the special use permit for Safe Embrace is one of the most effective ways to have a positive impact on victim survivors and the safety and well-being of Washoe County. As a reminder for you all, Nevada currently rates second in the nation for rates of domestic violence per capita. Washoe County in 2022, there were 3,645 instances of domestic violence reported to law enforcement. To further paint a picture of why services and safe shelter are so important, Nevada has ranked in the top 10 states for the last 23 of 25 years. For women being murdered by whim, the majority of the murders committed by intimate partner. As this hearing progresses, you will hear many positions and much input regarding the shelter operations. As you hear the comments, I challenge you to think about Washoe County's most vulnerable and the type of impact you want to have here in your community. Victim survivors have done nothing wrong, and denying them shelter only further penalizes them for having caused harm to them. Today, you have the opportunity to switch the negative narratives surrounding domestic violence and right this wrong. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bruce Foster, followed by Roger Edwards.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Bruce Foster, for the record. I'm a precinct captain, 6411, and also in District 4. And I am here, and why am I here? I am not here to talk about that Washoe County is a shopping cart capital per square mile of Nevada. No, I'm going to talk about the sexualization of our innocence. And what we're talking about is that I am concerned about our sexualization of our children, and that is being promoted in our taxpayer library system. And I feel that their agenda is having been pushed by the American Library Association, which the president is now Emily Drabinski, who's about Marxist and as well as a lesbian. So this is all coming down, which the Washoe County Library also supports that agenda. And this is where we're come to the point where man is calling evil good and good evil. Are these books really the Trojan horse of the sexualization, gender dysphoria movement? My example is this book that my wife found. Don't worry, my wife checked it out, letting the director know. And every book, everybody booked, and this was found at, right at eye level in the children's section at one of our local libraries. This book is children aged 8 to 12. This vibrant, beautifully illustrated book educates children about sex, gender, and relationships in a way that is inclusive of all sexual orientations and gender identities, covering puberty, hormones, pregnancy, consent, sex, babies, celebrates diversity in all forms, including race, ethnicity, faith, bodies, gender, and sexuality. And this is going to create incredible confusion, and I'm sure some of you have, you know, children, grandchildren. I have nine grandchildren, and because of that, I would never set my grandkids in a public library here in Washoe County. And examples of that is that it talks about a whole section of gender dysphoria, and then it has examples of, oops, of all kinds of people that are involved in that. It also shows sexual intercourse, and this is from age-
DA Kanderas, I just want to make sure that we're in the bounds of where the speech should be. Could you pause the time, Madam Clerk? I just, DA Kanderas.
At this time, I'm going to ask the public commenter not to show the pictures. Even though I heard comment that it's in a public library, it's different in this public forum, semi-public forum, so you can make your points, please, but don't show the pictures. Thank you.
Thank you, DA Kanderas, and you can continue the clock. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Well, this certainly proves my point. Thank you.
Roger Edwards, followed by Aspen Murillo.
Good morning, fellow public servants. Roger Edwards, for the record, as of November 15th, a certified 50-year resident of this area. Please enter my comments into the permanent record. I had no idea this was a semi-public meeting. It couldn't be any more public than this. All right, I'd like to echo Ms. Fianaca's problems about the director of the library board. Although my concerns are a little different than hers, I'm more concerned about being asked out on a date than the other things, although I have been thrown out of the meetings before they even started there, which I thought was kind of unique. But we at least got the library board to get back to having the board members run their meetings and not the school or the library director, who should be just doing contributions and not running meetings, which he was doing. And I'm here to talk a little bit about the agenda. I'm kind of happy to see we're not spending millions upon millions of dollars, which we are all too apt to do. We, you know, as past chairman of the Washoe County Republican Party, I would, I'd like to speak to the whole board as a group about not spending money, but the Republicans on this board have a commitment through their party affiliations to not spend money unnecessarily. So that's about all I've got to add. Please be conscious of public dollars and do what you can with the library board. This is a debacle, and I'm certainly, let's look up why this is not a completely public meeting, Madam Counselor. Thank you.
Aspen Murillo, followed by Penny Brock.
My name is Aspen. I live in District 1 on Washoe land, and I work in domestic violence. And so I am here on behalf of Safe Embrace to just say that Safe Embrace is one of the few resources in the community that is able to offer transitional housing, and transitional housing is sometimes the bridge between leaving a domestic violence situation and ending up on the streets. And we need more options for that. So if this county does deny the permits, they need to provide something else to the community to make up for that loss. Thank you.
Thank you. Penny Brock, followed by Samantha Gonzalez.
Penny Brock, for the record, please put my comments in the record per NRS. I'm here to talk about Strategy Rose and Amber McReynolds, the CEO of a certain group. She's also the vice chairman of the U.S. Post Office Board of Commission. This goes back to December when the county manager hired the Elections Group. It was revealed in your strategic planning meeting in January or February that they had been hired. Then it came to the commission in late March because the contract had to be approved, even though we'd hired them already. So it was a tie vote, so it was denied. Then when the new commissioner was added, she was appointed in April, it came back for a vote, which was illegal. And it passed, and it was decided that it would be split, and it would go to the Audit Committee to decide what to do. The Audit Committee decided that it should not move forward for the 500 grand. In the meantime, the county manager had sent an RFP to Strategy Rose, and you can see they were awarded that in May. Then in about September, he issued another RFP to Strategy Rose, and they were hired. The contract was signed October 1st. For that, they're getting $237,000 for work between October and December. If it's a full-year contract, that would be an almost $1 million contract. How could this move forward? There's problems with the contract. The business licenses were not provided. Also, in NRS, it says that all contracts must have a provision that they support Israel. This is not in that contract. Therefore, this contract is in violation for many, many, many reasons. So I don't know what you can do about it. I think because it's in violation of NRS for many reasons, plus the way that this all came about. Without your knowledge, it should have been voted on for you to approve this contract. We didn't learn about it until the October meeting at the Sparks Library that the county manager had hired Strategy Rose. Amber McReynolds is known to be the queen of mail-in ballots for the nation. Her goal is that we will vote by mail-in ballots, not go to the polls. It's said that the U.S. Post Office is now the Democrat ballot box. We have many problems-
Thank you. Samantha Gonzalez, followed by Nora Constantino.
My name is Samantha Gonzalez. I'm a Washoe County resident, native, and I've lived on Ponderosa Drive for over 23 years. It's our home where we raised our children, where we have our memories. We can't go anywhere else. But Safe Embrace has many options for expansion. We're not asking them to shut down. They can go open as many group homes as they'd like in the community with little to no requirements or restrictions. And we understand that Safe Embrace has a lot of community support and funding. We're not, but so what we're asking you today is to make a decision based on the application and the expansion of this group home into a group care facility and base it on facts alone. I'm going to tell you why this is not consistent with the neighborhood. Women get dropped off and picked up all day, night, day, around the street and at the end of the street, all over. Several years ago, police were there with guns drawn, pointing to the house. Just recently, a two- to three-year-old little girl wandered off early on a Saturday morning into the neighbor's yard, and no one was looking for her. When the sheriff arrived, they went to the front door, and no one answered. The appeal application said the neighbors have been provided 24 seven phone numbers and emails. We've never, not one neighbor's ever been provided any of that information. It's a falsification on their application. A woman approached my then preteen daughters, asked them for, they're riding their bikes, cigarettes, alcohol, weed. They have dog kennels in the back fence with dogs barking day and night. They did for a 90-day period. One neighbor heard a man and woman yelling at 2:00 a.m. in the backyard of Safe Embrace. One neighbor had the sheriff pounding at the door at 2:00 a.m., and it turns out it was the wrong address meant for Safe Embrace. It's a constant turnover of people. As with any transient population, some are nice and some are very not-nice. Most neighbors have had at least one or more incident of obscenities being yelled at them. How is any of this consistent with a rural-like neighborhood? How does any of that meet the standard for consistency to a low-density residential, rural-feeling neighborhood? I also want to, once again, address that there's no licensing of this domestic violence shelter. Washoe County Human Services staff have never replied, and they are therefore held accountable to no one. We see women with their children in the day, and then at night, we saw her walking alone. Where are her kids? Are they with an unknown adult in the house, or are they left alone? And then lastly, we continually brought up the- And then lastly, we continually brought up the issue of safety and the fact that there's been four domestic violence murders in the last seven months, and you guys continually post the confidential address. It's not safe for the neighbors. It's not safe for the shelter, and we really are asking that you stop doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Nora Constantino, followed by Nicole Winkelman.
Good morning. I'm Nora Constantino, a lifelong resident of Washoe County. I have friends and family that live on Ponderosa Drive. I've spent considerable time amount on that street, especially when our mother was in hospice with my sister. Just a little background on the property. It was licensed as a group home that cared for people dying of HIV and AIDS. At that time, they had about five patients or fewer, and hardly any visitors. Washoe County illegally issued a group home care facility license to Safe Embrace, which was then revoked by the judge because it was illegal, and there's been a cascade of poor decisions since. Let me be clear, I'm not opposed to Safe Embrace. I strongly support their mission, and it's important and it's necessary. This is not about what they do. This is not about who they help. You hear a lot of testimony about how great they are, but your decision today must be based on the requirements for a special use permit. It's about site suitability in this neighborhood. Safe Embrace has options to open more group homes, or apartment buildings even, as their other sister agencies have done. They have the financial means to provide lower-density housing for women and their children in an environment that's safer than what they proposed with this special use permit. The people that live in the neighborhood do not have the luxury to buy more houses and move. This is a low-density suburban neighborhood with one-acre lots. The intent was to maintain the feel of being in the country while still in the city. That's why there are no streetlights or sidewalks. That in itself poses a risk for the residents and the neighbors. There have been times when I've driven down Sullivan, made that blind turn onto Ponderosa Drive, and encountered women and children walking in the dark in the middle of the street, or women and kids walking in the middle of the street dragging garbage bags of belongings. Not everyone is as cautious. Approving the application would certainly increase the amount of foot traffic, and it's not safe. Allowing a minimum of 18 people plus five to six staff on a one-acre lot is not suitable for this neighborhood. They also operate an office on the site Monday through Friday. Currently, children are living in a group home with other men, women, and children they do not know, with no onsite supervision at night. These children have already experienced trauma, and trying to adapt to an environment such as this is not in their best interest. A healthier solution is smaller homes with fewer unfamiliar faces. In addition, with increased density on the property, there's an increased risk of violence. As a public health professional, I can say that this is a public health threat. If there are more people living at this site, the risk of violence goes up with this increased density. How does that meet site suitability? Thank you.
Nicole Winkelman, followed by Janet Butcher.
Hello, my name is Nicole Winkelman. Thank you for being here. I am the Policy Specialist for the Nevada Coalition to End Domestic and Sexual Violence, here to comment in support of Safe Embrace's special use permit. Domestic violence is complex and nuanced and so often misunderstood. Domestic violence harms not only the physical and emotional health of victim survivors, but also leaves them without a safe place to call home. Per capita rates of homelessness are highest in Washoe County compared to the state average due to the affordable housing crisis. When the violence is no longer bearable and the danger to themselves and their families' lives is too great, victim survivors have few accessible and affordable shelter and housing options, in a state that ranks 10th in the nation for rates of homelessness. In just one 24-hour period in Nevada, 571 victim survivors of domestic violence were served across the state. Of those clients served, 62% were for emergency shelter. On that same day, 33 victim survivors had unmet needs, with approximately 70% of those unmet needs being for emergency shelter due to program capacity and lack of available services. The most dangerous time for a victim survivor is when they leave an abusive relationship. So the importance of shelters cannot then be overstated, as they provide refuge from their abuser. In a study surveying thousands of victim survivors, respondents stated that without shelter, they would quote, "be sleeping in my car, lose my children, and lose my job." Other victim survivors expressed great uncertainty. Put simply, one said, "I honestly can't tell you what I would do because I honestly don't know." Without shelter and facing such great uncertainty, they would likely return to their abusers, saying, quote, "Perhaps I would continue putting up with the bad life I had with my abuser. In a few words, I would resign to live like this." Others saying, quote, "Probably would have been killed because I had nowhere to go. If I would have stayed with my other half, I would have been killed most likely." Victim survivors come from all walks of life, maintaining jobs and schedules that vary greatly between one another. It is important to acknowledge that their routines and needs may appear odd to other residents and neighbors observing their comings and goings. But these differences are not indicative of delinquent behavior or pose any real risk to their neighborhoods. Working night shifts, swing shifts, on-call schedules, traveling for appointments, walking to public transportation makes for a busy life, sometimes working well before the sun is up and after the sun has set. Furthermore, victims come to shelters in a state of crisis and are not transient people as they did not choose the lifestyle of housing instability and violence. I know this firsthand as a victim survivor myself. Victim survivors show great courage by leaving their abusers, and we owe it to them to respond with courage as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments verbatim per NRS code. I was only going to speak on Agenda 12 today, but, and also I'll be back, but I appreciate Penny, Ms. Brock, bringing up this contract, as I was duped with the Elections Group in the first place. It's a pretty sneaky way to conduct business. I'm very disappointed, but not surprised. The other thing I want to talk about right now is, I find it extremely interesting that people are shut down for reading certain books or for showing certain pictures when we are allowing our children to pick them off the bookshelf. There's no logic to it. What is wrong with these, with you people? It's okay for a child to go in and pick it up and look at it, but we can't talk about it or show it so that you know what is being perpetrated in our libraries? Shameful. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for this time. This comment, this public comment is for Item 7E6 on the land acknowledgement. That's coming up on your agenda. First and foremost, thank you for acknowledging the first people of our beautiful region. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, for bringing this forward. My name is Michonne Eben. I manage the Cultural Resource Program and am the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer for the Reno Sparks Indian Colony. As you are aware, oh, and I must say, I am the 650th generation of our great land here, the Great Basin and the great state of Nevada. As you are aware, land acknowledgements are an important admission to a rightful history that is long overdue. We must remind the citizens what has brought them to reside on this very land we call Washoe County, Nevada. I want to also remind this Washoe County that there is a historical context that continues to colonize the land. I want to share that indigenous people did not believe in lines, fences, boundaries, and maps, and designation maps. This type of personal property is colonization. I want to make clear that our region, the Truckee Meadows and Washoe County, was used by several tribes and not just, and not just one tribe. It is a shared-use area due to the plush food, land, landscapes, water, and medicines. When you acknowledge the land, you acknowledge the living Truckee River that flows 127 miles starting from Lake Tahoe, that comes through Washoe County and enters into Pyramid Lake. That's acknowledging the land. Also, the Truckee River was named for a Paiute man, although that was not his name, that is the name, it is a native name. Who led the settlers across the large mountains. We also have to acknowledge Peavine Mountain for its foods and medicines. We called it Akakaiba, Sunflower Mountain. It's acknowledging the lands and the landscapes and what they're used for. By acknowledging the land, we are a part of it. Each and every one of us Washoe County members, we are a part of this land and must acknowledge that. It's also the beginning of not only land back, but making sure tribes are a part of the processes. Washoe County, too, when you adopt this land acknowledgement, please remember that you will continue to consult with the tribes, the Reno Sparks Indian Colony, about the land, especially the Truckee Meadows Public Land Management Act. I heard public comment for almost an hour today, all very good, very interesting, but it all had to do with land, the colonization of my land, my personal property. Remember that this land acknowledgement is a proud and powerful thing. So thank you very much, and we support the land acknowledgement, Agenda Item 7E.C. Thank you.
Thank you. There's nobody else signed in? Thank you, Madam Clerk. It is 11 o'clock, so we will now move into Item 4, Mr. Manager.
Item 4 is Commissioners and County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Commissions' Updates, Requests for Information, or Topics for Future Agendas.
Okay, I'm looking to the Board to see Commissioner Andriola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to update everyone and, more importantly, thank the county manager for the allocation of staff to explore the horse property codes. And it was clear from the beginning that there would be additional items that needed to be looked at from a regulatory standpoint outside of Washoe County. So I just really wanted to, number one, thank, again, the county manager for allocating staff to not only look at the existing codes, but to even kind of map out what some of the barriers may be, along with, you know, soliciting feedback and working on that. Because there are going to be jurisdictional items that are bound by statute and administrative code, I've reached out to the Nevada Department of Agriculture, the Office of Lieutenant Governor, and the Governor's Office to continue moving forward on really looking at the potential exploration of change. So I just wanted to let everyone know and, again, acknowledge everyone's hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Any other Commissioners have comments? I'm not seeing any. I just wanted to, well, actually, Mr. Manager, do you have any announcements for us?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Excuse me, I...
Oh, Commissioner Clark.
...comments. Thank you. I was slow in the draw, apparently. I've got a few comments. I'd like to make some comments about what we heard today, and I'll get into more of that in a bit. I noticed a news report this morning that gas prices nationally are at $3.25 a gallon. Think about that. Has anybody in this county seen that price in the last three or four years? So I just want to point out that our citizens, our working poor, are at extreme disadvantage, number one. Number two, everybody who buys goods and services, anybody who has fuel, gasoline, all of these prices are through the roof here. So consequently, all of our citizens are at a disadvantage economically on a national basis. So just something to think about. I've got some other comments. On Thanksgiving, I received an email from somebody at the CARES campus. I've asked the clerk to put that on the record and pass that out to the other Commissioners to whom it may concern. I'm going to read this quickly. To whom it may concern, we've been experiencing extreme hardship regarding food at the CARES campus run by the Volunteers of America. A handwritten note, not an official typed document, has been used to keep basic, non-perishable foods and snacks purchased with SNAP funds off-campus. The food that is served here, meals brought in in warming vans, have given multiple people, including myself, food poisoning on several occasions. This is not acceptable. Hot coffee, hot water have been held back to only the mornings when the people who need this comfort the most needed, at night as well, when it gets colder, especially this time of year. This is a homeless shelter, not a prison. This is not compassion and sharing of resources. This is abuse of fellow people. Coffee not only being, now only being served between 4:00 and 9:00 a.m. This per county mandate. This screams lie due to the liability waiver. Everyone has signed when they are given initial access to the Nevada CARES campus. With the weather being as cold as it is, and coffee, hot water for coffee and soup is a major comfort to anyone. There has been no official document posted about this, and it's, there should be. No seal from the county commissioners, just a badly-written note and typed note on colored paper. No official at all, not official at all. People are not for sale. People treat the people here better. People treat the people here better. High quality and basics such as food, keeping coffee and hot water are a major way to say you care. Thank you for your time and consideration. So when I get this type of message from somebody who lives there, I don't live there, I've got to kind of take them at their word. I know how debilitating and how sick it is when you get food poisoning. So I've asked on numerous times from this dais to go over and sample the food, see what's happening there, and view it with my own eyes. So until that happens, I'm going to have to rely on messages like this. People need to take a good, hard look at this. If we're warehousing people here in the county, and they're getting sick from the food we're serving them, are we really helping people? You know, I see we've got a logo now for the CARES campus. What is that all about? I mean, are we going to have merchandised advertising stuff, T-shirts, and maybe uniforms and so forth for people? Why do we need a logo for the CARES campus? Just, what is that all about? Are we going to advertise the CARES campus on the freeway billboards? But, you know, just an issue. And, you know, read this email. We should be taking a good, hard look at it, the quality of the food there. And every Commissioner should be concerned about this. This shouldn't just be a one-off. We've got the same kind of an issue with the senior centers. The food there is not good-looking, it doesn't taste well. How much more does it cost to get quality food? Can we amend the contract? I've been harping about this. Weekly, I'm at a different senior center. The food doesn't look good, doesn't taste good, and the seniors are not happy with the food. They're not real complainers, but, you know, they're hungry, so they'll eat it, but it's just not appetizing. It isn't something you'd probably offer to your parents if you had the opportunity to offer them something other than that. So I wanted to talk about that. And I want to say thanks to Nevada Liberty for causing me to reread something I received in the past of public records. Penny Brock brought it up. You know, frankly, I'll be honest, I might even have not even read the text messages, but it came to my attention. So it talks about a meeting that we had at the Sparks Library a few weeks ago, and interaction between the speaker and Candy Ramos, who works here, and she does a great job, so I'm certainly not calling her out, but talks about, we have a handler, we have a handler for the Commissioners. I'd like to know if that's a fact. Do we have a handler for the Commissioners? Manager Brown, is there a handler for us? Not that I'm aware of, Commissioner. Okay. Because if so, I'd like to know who my handler is, so I can check with them to make sure I'm not doing anything inappropriate. And lastly, you know, for us to spend $3,500 to have somebody come over here from Salt Lake City and teach us how to be nice is like, you know, as far as I'm concerned, a waste of taxpayers' money. I've got a book here that was written 12 years ago that completely explains everything that was discussed at that meeting with the... that was discussed at that meeting with the dignity index. So, I'd like this to be on the record. I'll make a copy and get this to the clerk. How to Counter Group Manipulation Tactics, written in 2011. The first 10 pages covered every single aspect of that meeting that we had over at the Sparks Library. So, again, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we invite the community to the December 1st tour of the Resource Center. This was in lieu of actually doing the C-HAB meeting that someone brought up during public comment. That will be a 10:00 a.m. celebration of the opening of the Nevada CARES Campus Resource Center, and the public is also invited to come to that. So, and they're allowed to tour around for, I think, about a half hour. So, we'll see everyone there. And now, we will move into Item 5, Mr. Manager.
Item 5 is a presentation and discussion by Gabrielle Enfield, Community Reinvestment Manager, regarding a status update for the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund grant of $91,587,238 awarded to Washto County pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Enfield is with us this morning.
Welcome.
Good morning, Man of Chair, County Commissioners. For the record, Gabrielle Enfield, Community Reinvestment Manager. I have a brief presentation of an overview for the Community Reinvestment Program, including, of course, our ARPA, State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. Also, a new program that will be managed by the Community Reinvestment Program, the Opioid Abatement and Remediation Program, and then some general updates. As you know, we received $91.5 million from the federal government to support recovery and activities and projects related to the impact of COVID. This is a mature program now. We're well on our way. We have, through the county commission, allocated $90,485,000 of that. $58 million is obligated. That is an important designation, because that's one of our target requirements, is to obligate all of these funds by the end of 2024. And then expended, we've expended $32,964,000. So, we have just over a million remaining, and that is really our contingency as we go forward some projects, and you'll see in some of the items you receive today, for review and approval, some contingency funding that is needed to add to some projects that are under implementation. A lot of projects, 111, 59 of those are internal, 49 are external. So, those are community nonprofits and projects throughout the community. We have three admin accounts as well to support the administration and accounting of these funds. You can see, we have a lot of community projects, and one of the goals of Community Reinvestment throughout everything that we do is to provide high-quality assistance and support with the federal funds, because, as you know, managing federal funds is never easy. I just want to report, and I want to give kudos to my team. When I'm out in the community, I have heard almost from everyone that is a sub-recipient of this program, really strong praise of the team that is providing the assistance to them, and that's our goal, and I just wanted a little shout-out to my team, and continue to do that as we move forward, really to focus on increasing the capacity of the nonprofits to obtain, get their own federal funds, as well as properly implement the federal funds that are passed through Washto County. I passed out our annual report, which was published just after my last update, and this report summarizes all of the projects, and you can note detail of each project, and some of the focus on the outcomes. And as we move forward, those will all be updated as the projects are implemented. I also provided some copies of the report at the back of the room, if the public is interested in receiving one. Also, it's available on our website. And we do this report every year, so we'll be doing the next one in July. So, our timeline, and we're starting with where we are about to start 2024. So, we've implemented most of the grant-making process. You can see, most of these funds are already out. We will continue to allocate as there are any de-obligations, as projects finish under budget, and other activities that cause de-obligation, we'll be bringing those to you for allocation, and then obligating the existing projects, and really focusing on ensuring that we hit that obligation, as well as expenditure deadlines. So, we'll be looking into that, and really focusing on that in the next six months. And so, continuing on, we will be doing the monitoring and reporting, and then just focusing on implementing all these great projects, and supporting all of the departments and nonprofits that are doing the implementation. Our next, the next program I wanted to focus on is the Opioid Abatement and Remediation Program. But, it's our opioid settlement funding that Washto County has received through the One Nevada litigation that has been supported by our DA's office through the state. So, we expect to receive $41 million over the next 20 years. It's a long-term program. We have received $2.8 million so far, and by the end of this month, we expect to receive $6.4 million. These programs are, this funding, and they are from various different sources, require annual reporting, as well as eligibility use requirements, which are oftentimes unique to each of these awards. So, I just want to give you a little bit of a timeline on funding and funding priorities. The funding priorities are based on Washto County's opioid use and use disorder needs assessment that the Board approved in December of 2022. So, all of the funding will focus on those areas. And it will be an open competition. We expect applications from the county departments, nonprofit organizations, treatment providers, and private entities. There will be some preference given to internal Washto County projects. So, the funding distribution and how we will do this grant-making process, our expectations are to release the Notice of Funding Opportunity in January, anticipating an allocation, distribution of funding of $5.6 million. We'll be setting these up as two-year grants for that first round, and three-year grants for the second round. A little bit of timeline. So, of course, we've been preparing for the accounting, and the NOFA, Carissa Bradley, set this program up very, very expertly before she moved on to a bigger role at the city of Reno. But, we have this, a lot of this ready to go, so I am hoping that we'll be able to move everything forward along with this timeline. So, we'll be accepting the applications probably in February, and then, I won't go through each of these details, but we expect to make awards and bring new awards to the Board for approval in June. These are the funding priorities, and you can see these are from the needs assessment. So, it is funding disorder services for uninsured and underinsured, incentivized program for bupropophene in emergency rooms, outreach and education to BIPOD communities, child welfare best practices, detoxification, and short-term rehab. I'm not going to read through each, oh, that's the next slide, sorry. One of the focus of these programs is that the services provided or the projects implemented with these funds are evidence-based, or evidenced-informed treatments. It's really going back to best practices and proven methods. We, of course, will align with the needs assessment that was already identified in the community, and under all of the eligible uses. We will be developing an advisory committee of subject matter experts. We are experts in grants management, but not in this focus. So, we are leaning on experts throughout the community to support those activities. And then, the selections, as with the ARPA funding, will come to the Board of County Commission for final approval. Couple of slides that identify some of the uses that are eligible, that will be available for information in the NOFA. So, prevention and interventions for person of risk, treatment for substance use disorder, services for children and other persons in a behavioral health crisis. You can see there is a very broad, broad scope of services that can be provided with these funds. I won't go through them, but they're provided. Next, I just want to give you an update on Community Reinvestment Division. As I briefly mentioned, Carissa Bradley, our Grants and Community Program Analyst, has moved to the city of Reno. She is now their Strategic Innovations Manager, and we are looking for a new amazing person to do that work, and very exciting, interesting, and innovative work here at Washto County. We also will be having an open vacant position for an analyst for the opioid program to specifically and solely work on that program. Also, I am very pleased to let you know that the Community Reinvestment Team now includes Washto County's Grants Administrator. So, we're pooling what we do, and really doing a more coordinated and focused approach to identifying and applying the needs for federal funds throughout Washto County. I'm really excited to have Connie on board with us, and to add to the team. And then, of course, we have Amber, who is our diligent fiscal compliance officer, and Lauren, who has been doing a great job with discretionary funds as our program coordinator. So, here, I'm just going to give you a little bit, quick update, on the discretionary grant facilitation. This is really our assistance out to our departments, and potentially to nonprofits in the community, to focus on obtaining new funding for competitive grants, additional competitive federal grants, as well as foundations and state grants. So, to date, we've been awarded, Washto County's been awarded over $4 million on projects that we've supported and assisted, and those are the great projects that are, so far have been awarded. We have two projects that are still pending, that we have submitted. One, through the Sustainability Manager, focus on EV chargers throughout Washto County, and then a small grant for the arts, for our art trail. So, we will continue, and with Connie on board, and really working together with Connie, we're going to focus more on this program as we move forward. Before I jump to that, I just wanted to give you a little bit of what we're going to be doing next. Of course, we'll be hiring and onboarding for our two positions, and if you know anybody, let them know we're hiring for this position. Launching the opioid program, so that's going to be a big push. Also, we'll be beginning the appropriations process, or congressionally-directed spending, building on and increasing our grant efforts, focusing primarily on large-impact projects. And then, we will be beginning our planning for more concentrated support on community nonprofits for capacity building, so they can get and manage federal funds. Beginning planning for a second statewide grants conference. We did one back in 2020 with over 300 participants. We want to do that again. And then, expanding and working on data, use of data, outcome, outcome reporting, and impact storytelling, just a few. Do you have any questions?
Ms. Enfield, wow, this is incredible work for you and your team, and I do commend Manager Brown for empowering this team and giving you so many great projects. It's really exciting. This book needs to go to our congressional delegation. They need to know the incredible work we're doing in our communities, and it's just so exciting to see how transparent we are being about these federal funds, and how hard you and your team are working to get additional funds for the great work that the county is trying to pursue. So, I'm looking forward to seeing, whenever the last tranche of ARPA, if we release that to the public, just let the commissioners know, so we can get that word out as well. And I understand there may be state funds as well, and so, if there's any opportunity to collaborate with the state on those funds, just let us know how we can support that. And then, the opioid settlement work is so important. So, I'm glad that you guys are taking, you know, control of that, but also ensuring the best practices, and the experts are at the table. So, I'm really looking forward to seeing that work, and showing, getting that money into the affected communities, because that is why we are accepting these settlements. So, looking to the Board to see if there's any other comments or questions, and I'm not seeing any, so, thank you.
I've signed in again.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Clark, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Enfield. You always do a great presentation, do great work. We're very happy with what you're doing. I'd like to have a couple more details, and these don't have to be set in stone, but the opioid funds, so how do you envision those being used? What do you, if you could wave a magic wand, what would you see, the best, the highest and best use for that funding?
Well, the work has been done through a community process to identify the priorities for those funds for Washto County, and I expect we will build those priorities into the evaluation component, as well as identifying for the applicants, really, what we're looking for, and those are the... Those funding priorities there are the priorities that we will be focusing on. So, certainly, if we find a lot of applications for other, in other avenues, that'll be something that we'll look into more detail in our needs assessment, to see where we need to focus. But, this is really our primary guiding principles from the experts in Washto County, as far as what Washto County needs to focus on. So, we'll be using these.
Yeah, I appreciate the priorities that they're looking for, but do you have things in mind that may be more of a localized issue that maybe we can...
Maybe show the examples on...
So, on these examples, projects and programs that are focused on early intervention, treatment, so we know that there is a lack of funding for treatment, and so, I expect we will be utilizing these funds for treatment. utilizing these funds for treatment. Certainly, some of the, we've heard from the board in the past that we really want to focus on root causes. So I expect some of these functional areas that go to root causes will also be the prevention kinds of activities. Housing is also an eligible use of these funds and is something we all know is lacking in our community. Definitely services for children, again, going back to root causes and really addressing issues before they start.
That's one that jumps out at me as well, the services for children. Does that be preventive training, that type of thing?
I think you're looking for information on really what that would look like, and it's a little outside of my expertise.
Sure, sure. I'm just talking. I'm not holding your feet to the fire on this.
We will definitely, as we go through the process and do the evaluation, we'll definitely be providing you more detail on what these projects and programs that are funded will be doing.
Very good. Thank you.
Great. Any other board members? I'm not seeing any. Okay, thank you so much. Great work. I commend you and your team. All right, we will now move into item six, donations. And Commissioner Garcia, do you mind doing that motion for us?
Of course, Madam Chair. Today is Giving Tuesday, and we'd like to thank Peter Listner for thinking of the county, for supporting the mission of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, Honor Guard, who honor and pay respect to those whose lives have been lost in the line of duty. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Do we have a second on the donations?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
There is none.
Okay. With a motion and a second, any questions on the motion, on the donations? No questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. We'll now move into the consent items. And before we begin on that, I think Commissioner Garcia, you have a disclosure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just want to make a quick disclosure for item 7E7. And I'd like to disclose that I have a family member who works for the library system, and these renovations do not impact her position or her salary, so I'll be voting on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, are there any commissioners who want to pull an item from consent or have questions for staff on consent? I'm looking, I'm not seeing any commissioners that do. So with that, I am looking for a motion on the consent.
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. And is there a second?
Second.
Who did second? Oh, thank you, Vice Chair Herman. We have a motion and a second. And Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
There is. First up, we have Lori Ray, followed by Valerie Fianaca.
Thank you.
My name is Lori Ray. I live in Reno, and I'm one of the directors of the nonprofit Scenic Nevada. Our mission is to preserve, protect, and enhance the scenic beauty of our state. We wrote you this letter about this agenda item, and I'll submit it for the record. Billboards are nothing more than eyesores that diminish scenic vistas and create a negative impact on the character of Washoe County communities. On behalf of the Scenic Nevada Board, we urge you to deny the staff recommendation for a billboard lease on county-owned land to Lamar companies for the continued use of an existing billboard. Instead, we urge you to consider the billboard ban that exists in county code and in the city of Reno today. You have the opportunity now to rid the region of one more of these unsightly signs that block scenic views and reduce nearby property values by refusing to allow a new lease and setting in motion the process to tear this relic down. We think it was built before 1997. Scenic Nevada is very familiar with the region's sign codes, having participated for many years in meetings and workshops in both jurisdictions to update the sign codes. During the county process, we submitted a petition signed by more than 400 people asking the commission to keep new billboards out of Washoe County areas, and they did. This may be an existing billboard in a neighboring jurisdiction, but it is located on county-owned land now. At a minimum, here are some of the county's sign codes that should prevent you from signing this lease. Any billboard that is not identified in the most current billboard inventory list is prohibited. Signs on public property or rights of way are also prohibited. One of the purposes of the sign code is to limit signage on county property only for locational, directional, traffic control, and public safety purposes. Another purpose of the sign code is to promote the use of signs which are aesthetically pleasing and compatible with scenic views. And in the definition of a billboard, it says signs listed on the billboard inventory are legal, nonconforming billboards because they do not comply with current standards. The lease for this billboard expired on May 31, 2023, and the billboard is nonconforming in both jurisdictions. You have the authority in county code and state law to have the billboard removed, and neither jurisdiction will be required to pay just compensation. Lamar is a multimillion-dollar company. Losing the advertising revenue from this sign would not impact the company. Conversely, the $21,000 annual lease revenue is a drop in the county's revenue bucket. It doesn't make any sense to sign a lease or a billboard in a county that prohibits them, especially since no other property owner can have one, and residents from both jurisdictions oppose them. Please vote to deny this billboard lease. Thank you.
Thank you.
Valerie Fianaca, followed by Elise Wetherly.
Valerie Fianaca, for the record. I'd like to talk first about 7E7, the allocation of ARPA funds. I get the feeling that we just have to spend this money or lose it. And all three of these facilities are relatively new. I don't know if any of you, maybe with the exception of Ms. Garcia, have been to Spanish Springs Library or South Valley's Library. They're beautiful. I don't see what you would remodel it, either one of those facilities, unless it's something that we don't see underneath the surface, computers, maybe they need Zoom rooms. I don't see it. They might need Zoom rooms. I'll say that straight up. But that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money going out there. 7H1, my first question is, has Meteor been investigated and undergone due diligence? And didn't FHN Financial, Main Street Advisors, lose $41 million of taxpayer money? Seems that's what the Audit Committee disclosed to us at our last go-around. I question whether or not we just roll over to the people that they're selling to without investigating the people they're selling to. I'm hoping you've done your due diligence on that one.
Thank you.
Elise Wetherly, followed by Abby Damp.
Hi, Elise Wetherly. I just wanted to say, first of all, number seven, I don't remember. I remember in the past, I've come to these meetings a lot, going, there's like this block thing, right? Where I think, is that all or nothing? That's why you would exclude one of them, because the block thing indicates you're not going to like separate out. It's all or nothing, right? And if that's the case, then I would ask 7E2, a nonprofit organization created for religious, charitable, or educational purposes. I understand that Washoe County's primary responsibility seems to be about money, right? That's the highlight of everything. Have I lost your interest? Anyway, all I will say, before I go to Fiesta Mexicana to get the grandson that is now an adult, the food that he likes, I will say, there is a difference between religions and actual true saving grace. There's a difference. But I can't be the one to explain how that works and should we like reorganize where we spend our money on things that make sense and are logical. That's just an observation. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Abby Damp, followed by Bonnie Brown.
I'm Abby. I'm here on behalf of Urban Roots to agree with the donation by Mike Clark and Commissioner Garcia. For those of you who might not know about Urban Roots, we're a nonprofit urban teaching farm located in downtown Reno. We provide nutritional, as well as garden education, for individuals and families of all ages. We have a few partnerships, just to name a couple with renown, Hope's Transitional Housing, as well as the Washoe County School District. We both share and demonstrate healthy recipes during workshops at the food bank and during field trips and programming. We also provide garden education at the farm and through our Gardening for All program, which spreads awareness on how to grow nutritionally-dense food using climate-smart practices. So we also have an environmental aspect with our organization. As a nonprofit, we have a community-centric mindset, so our focuses on fundraising are driven by our scholarship program, in which there is a minimum of 30% put aside for scholarships for all of our programming. This includes funding for Washoe County School District classes to attend field trips at the farm, building and sustaining gardens at other local nonprofits, schools, or at homes, and farm camp attendance for students in need. I have come to thank both Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Clark for their recent donation and motion for approval, which will go toward assuring affordable nutritional education for local students and families. As an organization for the community, supported by the community, it is vital that we continue to receive more funding from the community as we both provide education and nutritionally-dense food to the community, not just for our future, but for the environment as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie Brown, followed by Roger Edwards.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Bonnie Brown, and I am the Board President of Options Veterinary Care. It's northern Nevada's only nonprofit veterinary clinic, and we serve people who cannot otherwise afford veterinary care for a beloved pet. 70% of our clients are seniors. The rest are really low-income individuals, including veterans and low-income families. And as some of you may know, pets are such important companions, especially to senior citizens and children. We are on track this year to serve 8,000 residents of the county, helping their pets. The clinic partners with many other nonprofits in the community and also many county agencies, including Washoe County Regional Animal Services. Also, we work with many nonprofits, and we vaccinate and provide exams for people who are eligible for housing through various programs. And we do that exactly when they need it. So we operate on a flexible basis for those clients because it's hard for them to plan ahead. Keeping pets with people who love them is really good for the community. It keeps pets out of our already overcrowded animal shelters and in their homes. And it also is just generally good public health policy. Healthy pets are good public health policy. So for all of these reasons, and just because this is really such a great, animal-loving community, we really want to thank you all for considering funding for Options nonprofit veterinary clinic. Truly, we'd love to invite any of you to come for a tour. Several of you have toured the clinic, and we're very grateful. And we're just really honored to be part of this really great community. So with that, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Roger Edwards, followed by Penny Brock.
Good afternoon, fellow public servants. Roger Edwards, for the record. Please enter my comments into the permanent record. I'd like to draw your attention to 7E6, please. Recommendation to acknowledge and approve the placement of a tribal land acknowledgement as standing language on the Board of County Commissioners. This is not tribal land. The tribes were migrating hordes of hunter-gatherers. They never built one thing that lasted long enough, besides a couple of food stains and a cave, maybe, to even be historical. The dinosaurs were in this area for thousands of years before any hunter-gatherers came over from Asia or from Europe or wherever to this area. And they passed on through this area to Central America and South America. They don't deserve any recognition. This is political correctness run amok. It's feel-good nonsense at best. And, you know, I'm Italian, and my tribe demands equal time. I want something to be said about the Italians' contributions to this country, this county, this state, and this country as a whole. And actually, I'd like to have equal time for my tribe of conservatives that contribute every day to our community. And if you're going to be recognized in the Indians, you need to be recognized in all of these other tribes. With my own hands, I've built buildings out of concrete and steel that have lasted decades already and are underway to lasting a century. I didn't see any Indian buildings in the way where I built my buildings. I didn't see one Indian road. I didn't see one farmland of alfalfa planted by any Indians. I demand equal time where thou want this removed. What were the contributions of the tribes to the neighborhood? Besides those few blood stains, food stains in the caves, and some chip marks on some rocks, the beavers contributed more to the neighborhood than did the tribes. Hunter-gatherers are all fine, and they played a part in history, but not a part that demands any attention by this group. Thank you.
Penny Brock.
Penny Brock, for the record. Please put my comments in the record per NRS. I'm here to address 7H1, assigning our investment management portfolio to Meteor Public Funds. We've got a problem here. FHN became the investment manager in 2021. Per NRS, the income is to be greater than the losses. However, with FHN, the opposite went true. The losses were greater than the income. This needs to be investigated. This is a problem. So now they want, they chose Meteor Public Funds to take over the investment portfolio. This is a problem. I don't understand why this is in the consent block. This should stand alone for it to be discussed and voted on, not in a consent item like this. This should stand alone. So this Meteor Public Fund, did an RFP go out? Why aren't we giving this to a local financial management company? Who is this Meteor Public Funds group? Why aren't they here today? If this is all such a good thing, why aren't they here introducing him or this company to you, to we, the public? I object to you just hands-down approving this. This should be pulled out. And why isn't the treasurer here talking about who this Meteor Public Funds? Has he even met with them? Why are, it appears someone is just blindly accepting this Meteor Public Funds. I did some research on them. I couldn't find out their track record, how they're handling government funds for government This investment, the investments that we had for the county, it's huge. It's a large amount of money. How can you vote just in a consent item just to hand this over to whoever this Meteor Public Funds group is? If there isn't anybody in Reno, what about Vegas or even Sacramento? At least with Sacramento, it's easy to get to their office. It's easy for them to come here. Why are you going with a company in Ohio? At least FHN was in Las Vegas. Not that they did a good job for us, but why are you going to give this to a company in Ohio? Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we have a motion for the consent by Commissioner Garcia and a second by Vice Chair Herman. Any questions or comments by the board? Looks like Commissioner Clark has signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got some concerns with the billboard, the sign that... I've got some concerns with the billboard, the sign that Ms. Ray talked about. And I'm just wondering if, if any of the things that she had to say were factual. Do we have anybody from the staff that can address the specific concern she had as far as the legality of the sign and the approval of the lease, that type of thing? So that's a concern of mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, Mr. Crump is in the.
Oh, yes, there he's coming down.
Good afternoon. For the record, Eric Crump with Washoe County's Community Service Department. I guess it's actually still morning, so apologize for that. I'll have to look into the sign notes. This was a, this was an existing sign. It's my understanding that signs prior to that were grandfathered in. This is not a new sign. This is certainly the board's opportunity. If we do want to get rid of the sign, this would be the opportunity to not approve this resolution. This was on property that we acquired from the city of Reno for the CARES campus. It's not impacting our use. It's in a kind of a very industrialized area, near the spaghetti bowl on the CARES campus and provides some revenue.
Any other questions, Commissioner Clark?
No, no, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Herman.
I have, had it on. Okay, now we're here. Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, from listening to some of the people here, I see some issues that I missed. And Penny brought that one question up about FHN. And maybe, maybe we could think about, you know, bringing that to discussion. And also, Roger, he brought up the tribe language. I'm a quarter American Indian, so, I mean, I, I don't feel like I'm anything special. I figure I'm Italian, I'm French, and I'm Indian. So, so I don't think that I deserve to have a free ride. And that's my opinion about that thing. That's my personal opinion. But if we could maybe discuss that a little bit or maybe put it off to another, another meeting.
Well, and I hear you, Vice Chair.
And I did make a motion.
Yeah, we have a second. So technically, per the rules, we've got to take a vote. And certainly, if board members have concerns, we can, you know, see how the vote goes. I have spoken to the Treasurer on the new firm, and it's my understanding that they're looking to go out to RFP eventually. So this is, but, but certainly, we can have the Treasurer come up if you want to hear that from the Treasurer. I'm not sure if the Treasurer's here.
He was here.
Okay. He was here. Okay. But anyway, I, I see Commissioner Garcia nodding that she had heard the same thing. But anyway, we can have this vote, and then we can see how that goes and, and go from there. Any other comments by the board?
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask that the, until I could talk to Mr. Crump further, I'd like to see if we can pull that sign out of the consent.
Sure, and you can definitely vote no because we already have a motion and a second on the table. Commissioner Andriola?
Go ahead. Madam Chair, I was just going to offer for the billboard item. I believe the item is styled that if it is approved today, it would go to a public hearing. So I think that at a public hearing, all of the issues about whether it should be used could, could be handled there, too. That's just something, if that eases Commissioner Clark's mind a little bit. And then with respect to the assignment of the, of the investment pool monies, that is a formality when a company takes over another company. This contract is going to expire, I believe, in 2025. And the Treasurer had indicated in the item itself that it is going out for RFP. So I would consider that a formality to, as an assignment, and, and knowing that this is going to be vetted by the Treasurer's Office and potentially a new, a new manager of the Washoe County Investment Pool would be selected pursuant to the rules of competitive bidding.
Thank you, DA Kanderas. Commissioner Andriola?
I was going to just echo the comments in terms of speaking with the Treasurer, and I serve on the investment committee, and it is a procedural. So I don't think I'm really going to need to add any more than was already disclosed. And it certainly is going to go out to RFP, so I'll just echo those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. So with a motion by Commissioner Garcia, a second by Vice Chair Herman, any other comments by the board? I am seeing none. We've taken public comment. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Commissioner Clark?
You know, I really don't want to vote on this billboard issue in this block, but since it's still going to be up for a public hearing, I'll vote yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. All right. We will now move on to the rest of our agenda. And I look to Vice Chair Herman. Do you have a block for us today?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That would be agenda item number eight, nine, 10, and 11.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Do we have a second for the block? Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. And Madam Clerk, I'm looking to you for public comment.
We have Roger Edwards on item eight.
I'm so sorry, I forgot. Commissioner Garcia, before we get into that, she has a disclosure to make. I apologize, Commissioner Garcia.
Today's the day of disclosures. I'd like to disclose that I have a family member who is a heavy equipment operator for the Community Services Department. These replacement units are for day-to-day operations and do not impact his position or salary, so I'll be voting on this item.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. I appreciate that. Now, back to you, Madam Clerk.
Roger Edwards is up for item eight.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Here is Roger Edwards again. My concern with item eight is we're talking about spending three-quarters of a million dollars on two really nice pieces of equipment. I would love to have one myself, Caterpillar Model 950Ms. But it doesn't say for what. It talks about, it talks about agencies, Minnesota Legislature, contract numbers. So what are we spending three-quarters of a million dollars on these loaders? Are they just going into the equipment pool? Are they for task? You know, flood abatement in Lemon Valley? Or what are these, what is this $750,000 for?
Snow removal.
I'm sorry?
Snow removal, sir. But go on.
Oh, well, okay, well, that's fine. Are they replacing some other pieces of equipment? Do we know? Or just adding them to the pool? Never mind, that's fine. All right, snow removal. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Penny Brock on item 11.
Penny Brock for the record. Please put my comments in the record per NRS. Number 11, the Pennington Foundation is going to give the CARES campus $3 million for a resource center. Now, I'm a little confused because Commissioner Hill said in her opening remarks that the CARES campus is opening a resource center. So I'm, I'm confused what this resource center is all about. There again, did the Pennington Foundation even know that we need at least two senior centers in Reno? All we have for Reno is the Ninth Street Center here, and that's being taken over by the homeless. Besides that, the growth of Reno has expanded since the Ninth Street Center was built. We have nothing in the south. We have nothing in the west. We have nothing in the northwest. So I don't understand why this Pennington Foundation is giving more money to the CARES campus for 1,700 to 2,000 homeless people, and we've got 110,000 seniors. So I don't know. I guess this is something you have to vote on, but perhaps it should be tabled so that a discussion can be with the Pennington Foundation about the true needs. Because I know they're, they very much want to provide for the people of our community, which is wonderful. But I wonder if they would be more in favor of the $3 million going to build maybe two senior centers? So just asking. I don't know if you can turn down a donation. I don't know. I just think that maybe it needs to be tabled to have a discussion with the Pennington Group. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in on these four items.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we have a motion by Vice Chair Herman and a second by Commissioner Andriola. Any comments or questions by the board on the block? I'm not seeing any. I would like to say thank you to the William N. Pennington Foundation for their support of the CARES campus. I think it shows that the work that the county is doing is really making a difference, and private foundations are taking notice. So thank you so much for their incredible support. We can't do it without these public-private partnerships. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. We will now go into our public hearing, item 12.
Item 12, public hearing. Appeal of the Washoe County Board of Adjustments inability to approve special use permit number WSUP 22-0019, Safe Embrace. The applicant requests approval of a special use permit to allow a group care facility for up to 25 occupants if, if connected to a city sewer, or up to 18 occupants if utilizing the existing septic system. The regulatory zone of the parcel is low-density suburban, and a special use permit is required per Washoe County Code Table 110.302.05.2. The proposal also requests to modify the parking requirements in Washoe County Code Development Code, Article 410, by not requiring any additional paved parking spaces or additional lighting in the parking area. The applicant and property owner is safe embrace. The address is 1995 Ponderosa Drive in Sparks. The assessor's parcel number is 026-422-14. And the Board of County Commissioners shall consider the appeal based on the record of any testimony and material submitted at the public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners may approve or deny the special use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And before we start with our staff presentation, DA Kanderas, can you just give an overview to the board about what we're doing today and what we need to be looking for while we're hearing from the public and staff and the appellant's?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I know that there's a lot of staff here today that will assist the board in directing its focus. This is essentially the question before the board is whether a special use permit should be issued. And the question is whether the property can, if it's appropriate use. Here's a second. Let me grab my notes.
You're fine. Sorry to put you on the spot.
I wrote it out. So the question is whether the increase is going, the increase in the users is going to be in appropriate use for the property. So while there will be discussions inevitably about square footage, a lot of those questions are only before us because of the, the way this matter came before this board. Originally, the city of Sparks issued permits, and it was done in error. There's been some litigation about that, which is basically concluded. And what the court has essentially said is it's really time to have a public hearing on this. And so it's, it's up to this board to determine whether an increase in occupancy will, if this is a justifiable use of this property. And so, like I said, I think that staff is going to be able to focus you directly. And if I think it's going off, I'll let you know. And I also have DDA Mike Large here today at the back if you have specific questions about the litigation.
Thank you so much. Okay, we will start with a staff presentation.
Good afternoon. I guess it's noon 9. This is, I'm Julie Oland. I'm with Planning and Building. So before you, as has been stated, is an appeal for the Safe Embrace. And this appeal is for, to allow for group care facility of up to 18 occupants if connected to septic, or 25 if connected to sewer. They're also asking for a modification of the parking requirements per Article 410, to not require any additional paved parking on the block, on the property, or additional lighting in the parking area. On August 3rd, this went before the Board of Adjustment, and it was, they were unable to approve or deny it. It was, it failed with a vote of two to two. This also came before you on October 17th, and the item was continued. You did hear public comment. Just to get you oriented, this property is off of Ponderosa Drive, which is off of Sullivan. I have a sort of an overview on the left, and on the right is a more close-up view of the property itself. Safe Embrace is an organization that provides counseling services and temporary housing for victims of domestic abuse and sexual abuse and human trafficking with a length of stay of 90 days. Safe Embrace has been located at this site for 20 years and has had a business license since 2001. Other organizations and shelters have been located at this site since 1994. The site was located in the Sparks sphere of influence. However, it was removed from the SOI and brought back into Washoe County jurisdiction in 2020. With that change, all planning and business, planning, business license, and building applications are now submitted just to Washoe County. Previously, it had been all planning application, I mean, it went to Washoe County, I mean, City of Sparks planning for any kind of planning requirements. Just to get the idea of what's around this site is the property is zoned low-density suburban, as are the other properties on Ponderosa. To the south is City of Sparks, and that's primarily single-family. And then farther south is City of Sparks, multifamily. To the east is Alice Rizley Elementary School, and to the north is more single-family. The house is a single-story house. It's 2,131 square feet, and it was built in 1964. In 2002, a portion of a detached garage was converted into workspace. And then in 2006, the whole building was converted into workspace and office space. And that's where the Kids Club is located also. And then in 2019, an attached garage was attached to the house, was converted into storage area, and then a 1,924-square-foot four-bedroom addition was constructed. All of these buildings were permitted and final through Washoe County and met all building code requirements at that time. Here's a layout of the property. You can see the main house, and then the converted garages to the right. And then there's the four-bedroom addition and to the, then you see the play area and so forth. And then the office, that detached building is the office and Kids Club area. So there is a requirement in Washoe County Code that requires for a care facility to have a minimum of 12,000 square feet for the first six facility users, and then an additional 150 square feet for any additional facility users, and that's interior square footage. This is not, includes closets, halls, garages, or bathrooms in that calculation. And for 18 occupants, the required space is, required is 3,000. And they were asking for 25 occupants. However, we have dropped that down to 21, and the applicant is agreeable to that. So that changes that calculation. So they're looking for 21 occupants. I don't have that number in front of me. I had it written down on postie, and I looked at my stuff. But they have enough if that garage is converted into habitable space. And I'm going to go on to that. So we'll talk about the site, the site itself. So on the 17th of November, I, along with the Building Inspector Supervisor, inspected the site, and we calculated the site as having 3,153 square feet. The converted garage is heated and is not heated. However, it has sprinklers, and it measured at 4,000, I mean, 431 square feet. So the site does meet the requirement with the 3,153 to allow 18 occupants. However, it does not measure up to be 20, for the 25 occupants. And with that additional garage, it does measure up to being, allowing 21 occupants. So they basically, at this point, with the site, can have the 18 occupants with the square footage that's calculated currently. If they were to convert or come in and read. If they were to convert or come in and re, rehab the garage, the attached garage, then they could have 21 occupants. So, the 25 is sort of no longer available to them unless they were to add additional buildings on the site. So, with the house and the converted garage, if it's brought up to building code requirements, they can have 21 occupants. And that also requires them to connect a sewer, and that's a conversation that they're still in discussion with City of Sparks with. The closest, I'm going to skip the first bullet because I've just gone through that a little bit. The closest fire station is in the City of Sparks on Vicotorian Street, and that's up 1.5 miles from the site. This facility is ADA compliant. Washoe County provides for the servicing service. And if the request is approved, additional inspections will be required by fire and building, and also planning. So, when they come in for a, they'll have to come in for a new business license to amend their existing business licenses, the procedure that they'll go through. And that will kick in a whole new commercial review of the license, and that will include building, fire, health, and also planning. We will all re-inspect the application to make sure it meets our codes. The property will need to re, and it's, will need to meet Article 412 landscaping for civic and commercial uses. Currently does not meet those code requirements. However, if the business, if this gets approved, the special use permit gets approved, then the business license will require us to have the applicant meet that Article 412. Here's a picture of the outside area and the rear yard.
Thank you.
And then also, as I stated earlier, they are asking for modifications for parking and lighting. And that is primarily because they have been, it's been indicated to them that they would like to maintain that neighborhood look. So, paving the parking area and lighting the parking area as required by commercial parking requirements would not really fit in with this neighborhood use. The applicant held two neighborhood meetings, one on July 18 of 2022, and then on May 23 of 2023 by Zoom. And as it was stated at that meeting, that they are not opposed to Safe Embrace, but just did not feel that this was the best location. They had concerns about safety, security of the neighborhood, enforcement of any project conditions, noise from dogs and residents, traffic, and road maintenance on a private road. The applicant did respond to some of the response, required, some of the concerns. They are proposing to hire additional staff to reside at the building overnight. Additionally, they are going to upgrade the cameras and security system to allow monitoring the exterior of the site. And then they are also going to develop guidelines for, for Safe Embrace to prepare a neighborhood response program. And I just want to add there that that Article 322, which addresses group care facilities, also requires that they have a neighborhood response program and also an emergency response program. So, that section of code in Article 322 will be addressed through that business license process to make sure that they're meeting all of those requirements. Additionally, the applicant is going to provide the email and phone numbers for the executive director and the shelter managers, and provide a weekly check-in with the neighbors and discuss any kind of problems. They're also proposing a pet shelter that will be available to house three dogs and six cats, or other small animals. And they'll have an indoor and outdoor area. And then the new pet policies will be put in place to address the barking dogs and any other pet nuisances. And dogs will only be allowed outside during the day and not at night. Several departments have reviewed this and have provided comments. Agencies with conditions are included in the conditions of approval that went before the Board of Adjustment. Staff recommends approval based on a thorough analysis and leaves the impacts that can be mitigated under the proposed conditions of approval. And I have provided a possible motion that I believe has been handed out to you with an amendment in there to allow just the 21 occupants and not the 25. I know the applicant's, or the appellant's representative is here on the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Do you have questions now, or do you want to?
I'll open it up to the Board if you have questions for staff before we hear from the appellant's or the applicants. I see Commissioner Andriola.
I have a question in terms of the Safe Embrace agreeing to have a resident on-site, if you will. Does that count towards the 21, or where does that come into play for the person who's going to be residing there?
I'd be told by the appellant, it does. Yes, I sort of, I was going to say it does, and that we are in agreement, yes.
Okay. I thought it was, but I thought it was important to clarify that the 21 occupants, if indeed that is what happens, would include the person who's residing as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Herman, were you signed in?
Yes.
You're good. Okay, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The playroom is 532 square feet and is used by clients, so it was included in the total interior square foot. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Public comment was made earlier stating that the Kids Club room was not permitted and should not be included in the total square footage. What are your thoughts, or what is our staff policy?
So, there is a building permit for that space to be converted from. So, they converted a portion of it, and then they came back where the office is located, and they came back and converted the other portion into livable, habitable space. I know planning, Kelly Millens of Planning and Buildings, Director of Planning and Buildings here, and also our inspectors here that came out there. But they're redeemed in habitable space, and they have all the requirements, as far as I understand, to have, to be inhabited the way they are. It's not a daycare. It's just a place where the kids can hang out. We went into the site, and they had beanbags to play and lots of, you know, tables to set out and drawings, stuff like that. So, the kids are only in there as, you know, you would have kids come into your family room or something, something like that. But they are not going to school there. They're not, there's no daycare facility there. It's just a hangout place.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any other board questions, Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, I just wasn't clear. Did you say they've applied for a permit to convert that space?
No.
Or it is, it has been issued a permit?
That happened, Julie Olander, for the record, that happened. There were two, two building permits that were pulled for that, and one was done in 2000, the office area where they have an office computer where the clients can go in and use the computers there was done in 2002. And then the Kids Club, which is now used as a Kids Club, it wasn't originally, but now has been converted into the Kids Club, that was done in 2006.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now have the appellant's come up and do their presentation, and then the applicants, the appellant's, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome.
Commission?
And we will give you 10 minutes, Madam Clerk, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission. For the record, Garrett Gordon, it's not very often I get to appear before you and represent a nonprofit, nonetheless, Safe Embrace. It's a privilege to represent them today in this special use permit request. Just for the record, Safe Embrace mission, whether it's counseling, housing assistance, emergency transportation and shelter, court or support, they're here to walk victims of domestic abuse, sexual assault, and human trafficking through any step of the process of getting safe and becoming a survivor. I pulled this right from the website. There's about 10 or 12 bullet points of services that they provide. They're a huge service to this community, especially to victims of domestic abuse. What we're here today for is the bullet point on the right-hand side, transitional housing. This property has been here, this operator has been here for over 20 years and provided a great resource for traditional housing. And the great thing about a use permit is we can condition it. And I think over the course of the last couple of years, in conjunction with our team, our planner, and working with the neighbors, trying to understand their concerns, we think we've come up with a list of conditions that we would apply on top of what has been operated historically in order to hopefully find the win-win moving forward. So again, we're here for a special use permit to allow a group care facility for up to 25 occupants. I think it's worth noting, when this originally was discussed at the City of Sparks, it was discussed to be 32. That 32 then was reduced to 28 with the application with the City of Sparks, then reduced for this application to 25. And you hear today, you will hear today, we're here for 21. And so, there's been a significant decrease, again, in my experience with working with developers, but here in the nonprofit context, trying to find a compromise of maybe where we started, where the neighbors wanted us to be, and found someplace we think in the middle is 21 is a fair number to move forward. And again, that 21 can only happen if this organization is connected to city sewer. And again, it's a nonprofit, so they're going to have to go out and raise funds in order to make that connection. They can move up to 18 if utilizing the existing septic system. I think it's also very important, this property's been here, this operator has been here for over 20 years, and other organizations and shelters have also been on-site since 1994. And again, this facility provides care for temporary residents, including women and men and children, with a length of stay limited to 90 days per occupant, and there's typically four members on-site. Here's a few pictures. I appreciate Julie showing these as well. And as far as the landscaping, just for the record, it's clear, we absolutely, prior to pull a, prior to pulling a business license to increase the number of occupants, will have to comply with landscaping along the frontage, which is one tree per 50 linear feet, as well as you'll see some additional plantings on the side yards in compliance with the landscaping requirements as well. And again, we cannot pull a business license until all of, to increase the number of occupants into all the conditions of approval and code compliance is verified by county staff. Again, a single-family residence, grass, currently landscaped, will be additionally landscaped to move forward. And again, this property has been operated like this for the last 20 years. So, code, as mentioned earlier by Julie, it requires a minimum of 1,200 square feet of interior space for the first six users and 150 square feet for each additional. So, I appreciate county staff coming out and verifying the actual square footage. There's been plans, there's assessor's websites. As Commissioner Clark knows, sometimes that's inaccurate. We have a very accurate number now of interior square footage, 3,153 square feet. That number plus 431 square feet, if and when the garage is converted, would allow up to 21 residents or occupants total. So, if the motion was made today to approve this, we would ask to be consistent. It would not be 25, but it would be, in fact, 21 based on current square footage. So again, up to 18 occupants with existing septic system, and only up to 21 with city sewer and converted garage. So, there was certainly some work to do in order to get to that 21 number. And again, we think it's a very fair number, given we started at over 30 and landing at 21. And again, each of these folks, each of these occupants are in some kind of danger or some kind of dire situation in their lives. So, the more, in our mind, the better. But again, trying to be a good neighbor out there and find the win-win for a number that hopefully could work for everyone. And again, as Julie mentioned, for code, there's a requirement for outdoor recreation area based on the number of users, and we're way above that square footage amount that's required by code. It's been a point of contention about dogs and dogs barking, and how many dogs and how many cats we're going to have. So, the record's clear, the shelter part, the pet shelter part, will be available to only house three dogs and six cats or small areas. And we can do better, and maybe is how it was operated in the past. So, we've committed to new pet policies that actually have been put in place to address barking dogs and other pet concerns, and dogs are no longer allowed outside at nighttime in the dog runs. You'll see the next slide, we continue to work with the neighborhood. If we can get that pet policy better, we certainly will bring input. But again, I think we're going to alleviate the barking dog issue moving forward. Probably the most important slide I'll show today is this one. I know this commission, it's very important for neighborhood outreach and to get input from the public. There was a neighborhood meeting in July of 2022, a neighborhood meeting in May of 2023, and I personally called the neighbor's attorney last Friday, the day after Thanksgiving, and said, is there anything else we can do? Is there anything else we can do as far as adding any more conditions that would mitigate the neighborhood's concerns? While he didn't give me, or they didn't give me any additional conditions, they did said, they did say regarding improving the private roadway that that had been done. And so, Safe Embrace has stepped up and completed the roadway improvements that were required by them. But here are five bullet points in addition to the new pet policy that I think specifically address some concerns we heard. Overnight hours, there was, there was never an employee or an advocate at night. We now will add one, and as Commissioner mentioned, that will count toward the 21. And even more importantly, an advocate or an employee requires money. So, by being able to add some additional occupants to 21, that means more grant funding, and we use the grant funding to pay for this overnight advocate. So, by increasing the number of users, we're able to hire someone overnight who's never been there before. We are upgrading the cameras and security system. Probably again, another one of the most important points is this neighborhood response program. All the neighbors will have 24-hour contact numbers and emails for the executive director and the shelter manager, as well as a scheduled weekly in-person check-in with neighborhood residents to discuss suggestions and improvements to the facility. If that's barking dogs or any other concerns that they may have, it will be a weekly check-in with them to make sure we're getting it right and being a good neighbor. The last two bullet points were directly from the neighborhood. We heard, rather than paving the parking area and driveways in accordance with code, they prefer that this area remained in a residential character, so we're asking not to have to pave, as well as varying the lighting standards. Again, not making this look like a commercial facility, again, a residential area, the neighborhood character of the area. We're going to vary the lighting standards to make sure it has a similar look to surrounding properties. Again, reviewing agencies, this was kind of a multi-jurisdictional review, and it started at Sparks, ended in the county. But county building and safety have signed off, county engineering, sewer, traffic, water rights, environmental health, Sparks Fire, Water, Truckee Meadows Regional Water Authority. Again, we got input from all these bodies, and there's a list of conditions of approval that we have to comply with before pulling a building permit. Finally, the legal findings, there's four of them. Actually, there's five, but I took off the bottom that dealt with military installations because it's not applicable. But four of them, I think staff emphasized and did a very good job. Many of these, all of them are met, but many of them are directly met in the fact that it has been in existence for the past 20 years. There's certainly improvements, utilities, consistency in regards to the proposal. And in regards to the detriment issuance of, issuance is not detrimental, and site suitability, we think those conditions I just showed you about maybe how this was operated for the last 20 years, how going forward, we can do even better, that the neighborhood response program, the cameras, and the overnight advocate will in fact check all those boxes of the findings to move forward. And with that, I'm here for any questions. My team is here for any questions, and thank you for your time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for the appellant to the Board? I'm looking, not seeing any. Thank you. We will now open it up to public comment unless Board members have any other questions for staff before we do that. Okay, this is a public hearing. We'll open it up to public comment. Madam Clerk?
First up, we have Marvis Butel, followed by Katie Nepper.
I'm Marvis Butel, and I live adjoining our backyard to join with Safe Embrace. We're here today because some five-plus years ago, a Sparks City Council member, a public servant, decided his own interest superseded the law and the community good. He pushed through the licenses and permits needed to expand and change the scope of Safe Embrace, disregarding city ordinances and laws, and allowing for no public notice or discussion. It's been well documented as to why Safe Embrace should not be allowed to operate the expanded group care facility in the quiet residential subdivision of Ponderosa Drive. The Neppers have spent the last five years tirelessly fighting this injustice at the expense of their time, health, and financial assets. Ms. Olander and Safe Embrace attorneys were very unprepared and presented a very untrue picture of the situation at the last meeting with the Sparks City Council. They could not even answer basic questions concerning the space available for the residents who would be housed at Safe Embrace. Now, you've been hearing over and over about the 20-year time span that Safe Embrace has been operating. Historically, that's very misleading. Historically, that's very misleading. Historically, the property in question functions as a group home with a maximum of 10 residing there. Its standing as a group care facility lasted only about two years, and that was illegal, according to a judge. The Ponderosa Drive property owners are agreeable to maintain the status of a group home there. Increasing the number housed at Safe Embrace to 18 or 21 is an unacceptable situation, as proven by the evidence presented in the opposition report you have before you. We keep hearing what a necessary and compassionate endeavor Safe Embrace is. The truth is, it's a business operating in a residentially-sown subdivision, and it really has no legal standing to be there. The question now comes down to whether or not this body will have the integrity to uphold the original intent of the law and deny the special use permit, or will you cave to the pressure of what's gone on before? If you decide to grant the special use permit and try to ease your consciences by attaching conditions, as was discussed, rest assured that Safe Embrace will never meet any of those conditions. Past performance is a window into the future. It has been admitted by some involved that the original expansion decision was wrong and illegal, but they maintain it's too late to undo it. I disagree, I'm sorry, but I disagree, it's never too late to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Nepper, followed by Alfred Nepper.
Katie Nepper, and it was interesting what we were just told on the kids' club, it's right here on my phone, which you can't see, but you have a copy of it from the last time, and this is from building, and it says that it was not, this structure shows no permit for the conversion from a storage room to the habitable computer room. That was in 2018. I gave you a copy of that on the last one, and I can't believe that, that planning is saying that's not true. We presented volumes of documentation, including pictures, as to why this has to be denied. This property has always been a group home. That's a single-family residence. It's always been, just like my home. Here's a recap. One, code doesn't allow either detached structure to qualify as living space, as therefore their square footage cannot be counted since they aren't dwelling units. That makes livable square footage only 1,427 square feet, the mount in the main house, which is only enough for seven occupants, although 10 are allowed if this stays a group home. Two, finding of consistency cannot be met. Planning's comment that the group home has been in existence for over 20 years is a saying, a saying our home has been in existence for over 20 years. A group home by definition is a single-family residence. A group care facility is a change in use, a big change in use, and does not meet the consistency requirement. Three, finding of improvements cannot be met. The road is dangerous with no sidewalks and no lighting. Here's a picture taken after dark. The lights at the end of the street are from Agnes Rizley School, which is across from Sullivan. If you were walking down that in the middle of the street, which is what you have to do, and a neighbor comes into the neighborhood, that's an accident waiting to happen. Four, finding of site suitability cannot be met. Per code, only one dwelling unit is allowed per acre in LDS zoning. That's true, you can check it. Passing this is the same as allowing for three. Five, finding not detrimental cannot be met. We've detailed the safety issues. In exact same well-publicized circumstances, police banging on a door at 2:00 in the morning have led to the death of an innocent person. And a commercial complex with the required six-foot non-wood wall around the whole perimeter of the property, parking for 10 cars, and a big trash bin enclosure certainly is out of character for our neighborhood. Please don't reward Safe Embrace's outrageous behavior. Thank you.
Alfred Nepper, followed by Serena Evans, and I believe Katie Nepper will be speaking on Alfred's behalf.
He's going to try to speak for himself. Hopefully, this will work.
Alfred Nepper, I've resided at 2106 Ponderosa Drive for 36 years. Prior to, during that time, first of all, let me just say background a little bit, because we have been in front of this board and in front of the City Council of Sparks, in front of everybody for five years fighting this. When I was 11 years old, I lost my mother. When I was 16 years old, I lost my father. I took over our farm and I ran it as a junior and senior in high school. I was a, appointed to different, to different U.S. Military Academies, which I turned down. I was a National Merit Scholar, et cetera, et cetera. I was abused by my stepmother. I had no financial help, and excuse me, I'm emotional, but this disease I have makes it very difficult for me to speak. That's why my wife has spoken for me in the past. So bear with me. Anyway, Safe Embrace has had a history of disregarding code forever. They, in their own presentation to the city of Sparks, they said in 2017 that they had 14 occupants and four staff members. They were only allowed 10. Then they applied for 32 occupants on a building permit, knowing that they were only allowed 18 because their state-approved septic system was only certified for 18 individuals. And yet they knowingly tried to get more than that. During the time that they were illegally operating as a group care facility, they were required to have the same type of landscaping and everything that's required by a group care facility. This county did not enforce that code at all. In fact, they tore down all the trees in front, which was in violation of code. They put up new wooden fence, which is in violation of code. The main thing is, though, they have occupied this detached garage for all these years without a permit. Planning is wrong. It says it was only for the office and the bathroom, and in 2006, it clarified that the remainder of the building was a storage area. That was pointed out by the building review in 2018, as my wife said. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Serena Evans, followed by Danielle Mills.
Thank you for the time to speak today. My name is Serena Evans, and I'm the Policy Director for the Nevada Coalition to End Domestic and Sexual Violence. The need for Safe Embrace and their emergency shelter in our community is undeniable. Currently, Washoe County has only two emergency safe shelters for those fleeing domestic violence, and with Safe Embrace operating at reduced capacity, many needing safe shelter are likely being given alternative, short-term, and less stable housing options. In previous hearings and in today's hearing, I have heard loud and clear that the neighbors aren't against domestic violence, because who would say that? They simply don't want to see or be burdened with it and even discourage Safe Embrace, or even encourage, my apologies, for Safe Embrace to build a new shelter elsewhere, leaving their community alone. I want to touch on why this is not feasible. First, domestic violence programs across the state are nonprofit organizations relying on state and federal grants and private donations. In recent years, federal funding sources have seen drastic decreases, with some funding sources being slashed in half by nearly half. Additionally, Nevada is one of the few states that does not, does not fund domestic and sexual violence service providers in its general budget. While programs receive some funding from a fee attached to each marriage license sold in Nevada, the numbers are miniscule to those states that receive unrestricted state dollars. While I understand that domestic violence is not glamorous, and it is misunderstood in our community, our programs, especially Safe Embrace, are doing the best with what they have. Building a whole new shelter and relocating is not an option. Lastly, I would like to address the concerns that domestic violence shelters have no oversight or regulations. The question has been asked repeatedly, why do they not have the same oversight as traditional group home facility treatments? The answer is simply because they are not group home facility treatments. Requiring domestic violence safe shelters to operate like a treatment facility is dangerous. So it is true that domestic violence shelters don't have the same oversight as group homes, but it does not mean that there is no accountability. Safe shelters have to apply annually for funding, and as such, have to meet specific requirements to operate a shelter. They routinely undergo programmatic audits from the state and federal funding, funders, including touring the shelter. There are even statewide grievance procedures in place, allowing victim survivors to voice any mistreatment or concerns they would like to be investigated. Domestic violence shelters are accountable to those that they are funded by and those that they serve. I stand before you today as an advocate for the voiceless and the thousands of victim survivors in our community who are too afraid to come forward and share their stories. Domestic violence victim survivors are not less than and have done nothing wrong, and by reducing the number of available shelter beds in our communities, we are turning our backs on those most in need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danielle Mills, followed by Janet Butcher.
Good afternoon, County Commissioners. My name is Danielle Mills, and I am the Training Coordinator for the Nevada Coalition to End Domestic and Sexual Violence. One of the main components of my role is to educate community leaders and agencies on best practices related to domestic and sexual violence services and prevention. I am pleased to be before you all today to hopefully offer some context into the complexities of the Safe Embrace shelter application. Throughout this long and ongoing process for Safe Embrace, confidentiality and safety of the shelter have been top of mind for many. For so long, many emergency domestic violence shelters have operated under an outdated and traditional model of keeping shelter locations confidential. While this model is well-intended, no shelter operates entirely confidentially, and they are always seen as dirty kept secrets in the community. Advocates know firsthand that a shelter can never truly exist under the radar, with law enforcement neighbors, community practitioners, and others knowing the location. Many shelters nationwide are moving towards the rules reduction model, which puts victim survivor and community needs above the false premise of confidential shelter locations. Shifting to a public shelter location model reduces the need for victim survivors and shelter residents having to walk several blocks to meet their rides or waiting for public transportation, potentially exposing them to further unsafe situations. In this ongoing process, Safe Embrace's shelter's address has been part of the public record and in numerous news articles. In this period, there have been no instances of perpetrators or unwanted guests showing up at the shelter, causing harm to residents, or requiring law enforcement involvement. According to national studies, those switching to public location shelters have experienced no additional adverse effects. NCEDSV can vouch for Safe Embrace and practices surrounding their shelter operations with hands-on support and supervision, ensuring residents are good neighbors. They comply with best practices, state and federal standards, and funding requirements. The continuous narrative being shared that the shelter operates as a free-for-all is harmful, false, and perpetuates negative stereotypes about those who experience violence and trauma. Blaming and further penalizing victim survivors is not in the spirit of Washoe County and the community that I know and love. I urge you all to side with victim survivors, take a stand against domestic violence, and ensure that life-saving services are readily available. Denying the special use permit could mean an increase in violence and homicides in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Butcher, followed by J.D. Draculich.
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments into the minutes as they are said. First of all, I want to preface by, I have a special place in my heart for Safe Embrace. Having had a family member kidnapped in downtown Reno and raped, Safe Embrace was very helpful with counseling. Moving past that, believe me, there's a big difference between 1977 and today, when people talk about domestic violence. Believe me, domestic violence in 1977 was a whole different story. I'm a victim of that, and being stalked by my former husband. I was lucky enough to have a fam, family close to me, and also probably very determined to move forward and move through it. As I've listened, it sounds like we went from 32 down to 21, and thank you, Commissioner Andrea, for noticing that one of them may also be the permanent, or somebody that was there overnight. So now we're increasing it by two. One of the things that I wonder, we've spent a lot of money on the CARES campus, we've given a lot of money to that, why aren't, why can't we do something for domestic violence and set up more facilities instead of having them all in one place? Why not have three or four around? There's different areas. I mean, my gosh, the, the, Washoe County is huge. We should have four, five, six different facilities. Why aren't we, why aren't we helping them out a little bit more with that? Which brings me to the residents. Having had a couple things done to places where I've resided in Washoe County, two different places, where it was once one thing, and now it's another. You purchase a home for a particular reason, and you look around you and you find out what is going on, what's there, what's happening. Nobody will build up above you. Guess what? They gave the land, the BLM gave the land to somebody, they build up above us. So now, the residents, you've got to take into consideration them. So you've got a tough, tough decision ahead of you, because you've got to consider the residents, and you do have to consider Safe Embrace.
Thank you.
J.D. Draculich, followed by Nora Constantino.
My name is J.D. Draculich. I'm on the Board of Safe Embrace. I strongly support this SUP today, so I thank you for your consideration. In my time on the Board, I've seen what this staff who is behind me here today has done to help these survivors of domestic violence, heard some horrible stories. My understanding is there really is only other, one other organization in this community that serves victims of domestic violence at the level we do. So we really are in need of this expansion and enhanced services. Notably, we serve 10 people right now in the shelter, but we do have a waitlist. So your approval today helps us meet the needs immediately of the people who are looking to escape their abuser. And as Mr. Gordon mentioned as well, some of our grants do base their funding off our capacity, so increasing our capacity does help the organization provide enhanced services. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Nora Constantino, followed by Samantha Gonzalez.
I'm Nora Constantino, as I said earlier. Again, I want to state that I support Safe Embrace, and I support what Safe Embrace does. Bless you. Your decision today is whether or not to approve the special news, special use permit to allow a group home to go to a group care facility. It should not, as Safe Embrace has many other options. They do not meet site suitability or consistency of the neighborhood. Think about the testimony you heard today from the neighbors, and how can you reconcile what they've said with being consistent with the neighborhood? I remind you that Safe Embrace has children with unrelated I remind you that Safe Embrace has children with unrelated, living with unrelated adults, both male and female, with no staff at night. Although they now state that they will have a staff person at night in their application, since they've not followed through with any of their other promises, since they have occupied that facility, I don't believe it now. Their history is full of promises with no action. These children live there with no county oversight. Who's responsible for the children's well-being and safety? Why is Washto County not concerned about this at all? The issue of safety continues to come up. When you broadcast the address of a domestic violence shelter, you put all residents of the shelter, including the children, and the people living on Ponderosa Drive at risk. The federal government recognizes this risk, and it's a significant one, and that need for anonymity. And federal government grants require that if the address is released, the grant funding is removed. I doubt a security camera on the outside of the building will save anyone if there is someone that really is looking for their victim and they know where they are. Safe Embrace has talked about security cameras for years, and there's been no change. There continues to be a question about, sorry, about the allowable square footage, which changed drastically from the last time to again today, and will it change again? Safe Embrace was approved illegally as a group care facility for over two years and had Washto County license. At that time, they were required to have a neighborhood response program. They never did during the entire two years. They were never held accountable by the county. Why will this time be any different? We don't believe it's going to be any different. There are many types of group homes, this is, that can be treatment-focused or not. Safe Embrace is a group home that has no oversight. A vote against Safe Embrace is not, a vote against this SUP is not a vote against Safe Embrace. It will remain as a group home.
Thank you. Samantha Gonzalez, followed by Tammy Whitich.
Samantha Gonzalez, for the record. I just want to ask you, as commissioners, do any of you have 13 to 26 people living next door to you with an office on-site, five days a week, Monday through Friday? We bought our home in a low residential density neighborhood because we like the country feel, and this soup does not meet the requirement of consistency. It does not fit into the low-density suburban area. It has a front yard parking lot, kids' club, therapy offices, staff offices with staff working eight to five Monday through Friday, a motel-like four-bedroom, four-bath structure, and dog kennels. A group home allowed in any residential area is far different than a group care facility, which is what they are requesting. There's certain requirements that need to be met as well, landscaping, which includes fencing. So I read that they have to have a six-to-seven-foot non-wood fence around the perimeter. That's going to make it stick out in the neighborhood, for sure. What if that fence is made of cinder block? They've operated as a group home, as many people have said, for many years. It's the same operators, and we've been promised and promised and promised and never had any follow-through. There's a question about site suitability and whether any of this square footage, you know, meets some of the requirements, like the kids' club, and my question is, how did they build that four-bedroom, four-bath detached or attached, well, it's kind of attached, it has a breezeway structure, with no kitchen? Because your code says that if you build a dwelling unit, you have to have a kitchen, and there's no kitchen in that, which kind of makes sense because there's going to be one kitchen for up to 21 people. There was a question about police. We're an island in Washto County, so we rely on the sheriff. When that little girl was in the front yard, it took the sheriff over 20 minutes to get there. When we've had other calls on the street, it takes the police and the sheriff anywhere from 20 to 30 minutes to get there. So that isn't very, it doesn't make us feel any better about that. The road was a complete disaster with huge potholes, and I know because my muffler broke because of the potholes. And the road has now been repaired with a Band-Aid through asphalt grinding. Safe Embrace did not repair that road, as previous testimony said. The neighbors are the ones that dealt with that. They did end up paying a part of the money, but they didn't take any interest in it, or we're the ones that did that. And I ask you again, do any of you have 13 to 26 people living next door to you with additional staff during the day? The rules are the rules, the facts are the facts. You're voting for a special use permit of increasing the number of residents and not, it's not a vote against Safe Embrace. Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy Whitich.
Hi, my name is Tammy Whitich. For the record, this is a residential neighborhood. There's no place for a commercial building in a residential neighborhood. Their application states that they would comply with the commercial landscaping regulations. This house was part of a neighborhood and looked like any of the other houses when we purchased our property, when it was a group home. Now they have cut down most of the trees in the front yard and put in gravel. The place looks desolate, which does not fit in with the other houses in the neighborhood. The picture in the SUP application does not represent what has happened to the property and its current status. Our neighborhood is surrounded by the city of Sparks, whose own code does not allow a domestic violence shelter in the residential neighborhood for security purposes. Putting more than the allowed 10 people on this property does not comply with the deed restrictions or fit in with the residential regulations of the county. Approving this special use permit will only go against the plans and regulations of the county and the neighborhood and would not be advantageous to anyone, and it would create a security issue for this quiet neighborhood. Please leave Safe Embrace as a group home, and Safe Embrace can do their commercial activities elsewhere. This is not a justified use for this property. It would create issues for the other homeowners. We bought our property, which is right down the street from Safe Embrace, in 2017, and were under the impression that it was a low-density residential neighborhood. All the properties, and I did do my due diligence, were zoned E1 at the time, which meant 10 or less occupants. None of the neighbors want to have a group care facility in this neighborhood. Would you want it in yours? Please do not approve this special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, I bring it back to the Board for discussion and questions, comments. I'm looking to see Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to hear from our DA's office, the one you, you know, get him up here to ask questions to.
Good afternoon. Michael Large from the District Attorney's Office, for the record.
I'd just like you to bring us up to date on the legal condition on this property.
On, in 2020, a lawsuit was filed by several of the neighbors, several who spoke to here today, against Safe Embrace, Washto County, and the city of Sparks. There was two parts to that litigation. One was a writ of mandamus. The neighbors were seeking a reversal of the city of Sparks's administrative approval. What happened in that case was, as you've heard here today, quite simply, Sparks, Safe Embrace, applied for an expansion to the city of Sparks. Sparks screwed up. They handled it administratively, as opposed to sending it to Planning Commission and to the City Council. So while Safe Embrace was blameless in that in regard to the expansion, city of Sparks screwed up. Everybody admits that. After the sphere of influence changed in 2020, and it came within the Washto County jurisdiction, then the lawsuit got filed. Then things got a little bit tricky because we had competing, an approval that had been gone through, Washto County is now in charge, everybody was trying to figure out what, who's responsible for what. Ultimately, the judge said in, on the writ of mandamus, that the city of Sparks screwed up, and that they were entitled to have a public hearing, which is what we're having here today. And that's the process that needs to happen. The public has the right to speak. That's what the judge's decision was. And at that point, the city of Sparks's approvals were revoked, and Washto County was required to revoke the business license. That litigation is still ongoing. There are several claims that are against, still against the city of Sparks and against Safe Embrace between, against, from the neighbors. Last week, the judge ruled, gave an tentative ruling in regard to that, and reduced many of the claims. Safe Embrace was successful in defeating a number of those claims, and, but there is still pending litigation. But as far as the county is concerned, in terms of the writ of mandamus, that litigation is over, except for a potential appeal by the county, should this board decide to at another date, and we'll discuss that at a later date. That's what's going on with the litigation side of it. Right now, before us, is whether or not the SUP, you can make the final findings that are necessary in order for the land use decision that Safe Embrace has submitted to the county, based on the evidence that's in the record today.
So by us approving, or, you know, voting on this in a positive way, we are not harming the case, the legal case?
Whether you approve or disapprove, it does not harm the case one way or another. There's going to be different ramifications for it, but I'm prepared for all of those.
Okay, and I know you can handle it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hello, Mr. Large. I'm glad you said it, the city of Sparks screwed up. Had I said it, the Dignity Index would be right after me. That being said, you know, city of Sparks did something incorrectly, and now it's in our lap, and now we've got to deal with it. And I don't think there's a more vulnerable population than women and children. People that are sexually trafficked, people that are abused, people that are beat up. So on to this side of the room, I'm 1,000% on their side. There's nothing more vulnerable than that. I don't care, you know, if I had a choice between people pushing shopping carts around or helping kids and beat up women, guess which one I'm going to vote for? It's as simple as that. This county has got boatloads of money that we've spent, boatloads of money that we've spent on the homeless population, and not much that we've done for this vulnerable population. If I could wave a magic wand, we'd pull off 10 or 15, 20% of the homeless population's money and build some shelters and some facilities for this vulnerable population. So I challenge the other women on this board to stick up for other women. In the future, let's spend some of this money that we get coming the county's way on situations like this. That just, you know, it's a priority. It should be a priority. On the other side of that, I'm always with the people that have this stuff in their backyards. This is an issue. They didn't buy this house knowing, they didn't buy, you know, most people, their whole life savings is tied up in their home. That's their asset. That's what they're going to pass on to the kids. That's whatever they may have and tied up in this world. And to have something that comes in and takes away value of their property, maybe the assessor should be looking at this and see if it devalued the neighborhood having this in here. This is just strictly a numbers thing I'm talking about now, not vulnerable populations. But, you know, I just had my, I talked to you earlier about this, I had my sewer, my septic pumped out yesterday, and I'm concerned about the septic situation there. I'm one person living in a house with a septic, and I've got to get that pumped out. How many times, how many times a year, how many times a month do they have to have their septic system pumped out? That's a health concern. This is something that we need to bring up at a later date, probably with the commissioners, but, you know, people get permits to build septic systems on their property, and then it's up to them to fix it. It's like buying a car. Nobody's over there to tell you if to change the oil or do whatever you need to do. So you own the septic system, do we have any regulations that say how often you have to pump out a septic system when you have six, eight, 12, 18 people occupying a property? And then it goes back to when I built my house. When you build your house, there's a certain square footage that the Health Department insists on, on square footage for that. If this was a small house built initially, this has probably got an undersized septic system, an undersized septic system being overused. So you've got the best of both worlds. So again, this has nothing to do with vulnerable populations, but this is functionally, is this allowable? So those are questions that I have, and I think the city of Sparks, to your words, screwed up on this. It's in our laps now, vulnerable population who I want to do everything I can to support, and we've got a situation where this thing is cobbled together with this permit and that permit, and we turn it into a garage with beanbag chairs, and now it was, you know, a place for kids to play, and now it's considered living space. This is an absolute mess that's been foisted onto us, and we need to figure out a way to fix it. But we also need to figure out a way to address this. This is two different problems. We've got a building that doesn't seem to be a right size or right fit doing something, and then we've also got a situation where people need help and vulnerable people. I've heard again and again about the address of this place being disclosed, it apparently has. I don't know what the address is, but it's out there in cyberspace, so that's out there. I have questions about how many calls we've had from the sheriff, and how many Sparks PD, if Sparks PD is handling it, the lady says the sheriff handles it. This is just a mess. We need to really think about this.
Mr. Chairman, in, sorry, Mr. Commissioner, I would, what I would say in regard to the Sparks screwing up, when I said that, and I, in all candor, what they did is they admitted that to their mistake. What they screwed up was procedurally. What they did, they didn't necessarily, in terms of approval or not approval, what they did is they didn't send it to a hearing, and that's what the, that's what the law requires. That's what their own code required. Whether or not they would have approved it in an open meeting, I don't know, and no one could, no one could forecast that. This Board's, what I would urge, and I'm sure Ms. Canderas will agree with me on this, is what the Board is here to do is to look at whether or not these five findings could be made for this SUP. In regard to the size of the building and all of those things, what you heard from staff in regard to the SUP application, is that the other agencies that reviewed it, including health, including water, including all of those, and building, all were in support of this with the conditions that are provided. In regard to how we deal with and address those issues down the road in terms of the septic, that's why we have a Health Department that requires a certain amount of pumping, and I'm not an expert on that, but I can speak to that.
Let me interrupt you real quick. I've been at my house for 18 years. They've never told me when it needed to be pumped, okay? So they don't tell you when to pump it, so I want to know, and luckily, I didn't have a problem, and I want to know how often they pump theirs with 18, 20 people there, and children, and whatever else.
Then I think, I mean, the applicant has--
And I know that isn't a part of this, but I'm bringing it out because we're talking about this particular situation, and this is an appropriate time to talk about those concerns, because this affects, I don't know what the percentage is, but I'm going to look into it and find out in the county, what percentage of homes we have on septic, and how often they are being pumped, and do we require them to be pumped? So it's just part of this conversation. When I hear about 18 people living in a house of any size, my first concern is human bodily functions, okay? Water, sewage, those are health issues. There's a reason the Health Department issues those permits, so people don't get sick. People in the neighborhood don't get sick. It doesn't over, you know, and we've got the recharge situation out in Rogers area, where there's too much water under the ground and stuff is flowing around. So these are things that need to be talked about. If we're going to talk about it, let's have it all talked about, instead of just rubber-stamping this thing. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would, Commissioner Clark, like to reiterate what Mr. Large pointed out. The question before the body today is, is whether this use is appropriate for the property. Safe Embrace will have to obtain all necessary permits prior to its occupancy, and all those questions will be addressed by the appropriate, the appropriate department at that time. So I think that the focus should be a little narrower, because that's what you were determining today.
Fair enough. I appreciate those, but again, those are, I want those, my concerns, on the record. That's as simple as that. The things that I'm thinking about, that I think are germane to this particular property, I want them to be on the record, so people can look at that at a later date. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have comments? Yes, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're here today because two members of the Board of Adjustment couldn't find the findings, right? They offered a lot of different reasons for those. We all probably watched-- We all probably watched the, the film for that. They were concerned mostly about site suitability and the issuance, not detrimental for many reasons. But we're here today, again, to do the public hearing part. And honestly, the, the heartache I have is that the administrative process wasn't there from the get-go. And we're here to do the public hearing, and I think that the residents, over time, you know, five years, dealing with multiple jurisdictions, promises made, and they deserve their voices to be heard. So I appreciate everybody that, that came into chambers today. Again, I've seen many of you multiple times. I know some of you, and I know this has been on your mind for many, many years. So today is the day, and I wanted to ask some of the questions that I heard you pose. So if I could have staff come back up, just for clarity. So there was three things that I kind of honed in on. One statement regarding the dwelling unit having no kitchen, that statement made earlier. The permitting of the playroom, again, I don't get the sense that there's a lot of trust in that last response you gave, so if you can elaborate on the playroom permitting issue. And the last was, one of the conditions was video surveillance. I took a tour last week, and I thought, I saw a new surveillance system up. I'm seeing some head nods. Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that that condition has already been met, and I wanted to know if any of the other conditions, I don't have Mr. Garrett Gordon's slide up of the other conditions, but if there have been any of those conditions that have been met to date as well. So if you could start with dwelling, dwelling units with no kitchen.
This is Julia Olander for the record with Planning and Building. So the detached office area, that was a permitted, well, it was under the City of Sparks jurisdiction. So they have different regulations. So if you were to come in currently within City, Washoe County currently, and you were to create a building with, that they're proposing to build with the bedrooms and the bathrooms, that would not be a permitted use in Washoe County. However, it was not brought into Washoe County. It was brought into City of Sparks. So I can't really speak to that, per se. The only one that was brought in under Washoe County, there's three building permits that I feel like they're, are relevant. The one for the detached building for the office space, the original office space done in 2002, that was done totally under Washoe County. Then it went into the sphere of, City of Sparks. So the planning, any planning aspect, anything that had to do with planning would have gone to City of Sparks, and that they would have reviewed that, you know, if they had a detached building, what were their requirements? I, I'm not going to speak for the City of Sparks, nor I'm not going to speak to what was going on in 2006 at City of Sparks. However, that was reviewed by planning at the City of Sparks. So I'm not sure what the requirements were on that building. And then, again, the, the four bedrooms with the, the addition with, the large addition with the four bedrooms and bathrooms, that again was done under the City of Sparks. So again, City of Sparks planning staff would have reviewed that and looked at their code requirements and what was required there.
Okay.
I think we all agree that the mission of Safe Embrace is something we can all get behind, and, you know, that we need more beds here regionally. I mean, everybody on, whether, there's literally an aisle between the two parties right now. But whether, whatever side of the aisle you stand on, we all agree on those two things. And so this was a messy situation. There's been a lot of different square footages floating around. I think some of us were here wrestling with just even that information. And so I just, I want to make sure that the residents on Ponderosa feel like their concerns were heard. I heard you. We heard you. It's not an ideal situation. And so if there's anything else, any other conditions, Mr. Gordon, that have been implemented to date that we need to be aware of before we go any further in this discussion?
For the record, Garrett Gordon, thank you for the opportunity to, to clarify. So yes, the camera system has been installed. The neighborhood program, if we hear that there needs to be additional cameras or additional locations, we're going to come up with some funding to do so. The landscaping has already been started on the front. Once we get through winter and prior to any increase in occupancy, we'll finish up those plantings in, in the spring. And as far as the pet policy with the historic, I guess, barking dogs, that has already been implemented as well. Understand that it's working, but per our weekly meetings with the neighbors, if we're not getting it right, we'll make sure to get it right in, in the future. And as far as the septic system, it's a commercial septic system that allows for, and has the capacity for 18 occupants.
Well, how many gallons? How many gallons does that tank?
For the record, I don't have the, the gallons, but as, as mentioned before, health and building have reviewed and have allowed for up to 18 occupants with the existing commercial septic system. So we are in compliance with health and, and county building. So Commissioner Garcia hopefully answered those questions.
Good to hear. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Andriella?
I, I too would like to echo the comments by Commissioner Garcia. I think that, and Commissioner Clark, in terms of, I'm trying to avoid using the word screwing up, but I don't think I can, since it's been used so much, that Sparks certainly had an opportunity, and it was, you know, missed, and it seems to have complicated in various ways. But the reality is, is that we're here. And I think that the neighbors are a huge concern in terms of their living there, and some obviously have been living there for a long time, and then the evolution of it being for, you know, end of life, and then moving to where we're at now. But I do think the accommodations in terms of the provisions that have already been shared. But I do have a couple more questions. And my first question is, do we have any information, even within the last year of calls by the sheriff's office specifically to that resident? We heard that there's a 20-minute response time. We heard about, you know, a young girl who seemed to be walking and--
For the record, Garrett Gordon, thank you for the question, Commissioner. It's my understanding that over the course of the last 12 months, there's been two calls to the sheriff to visit the site.
Was there any, is there any record or indication of anyone being harmed, or any violence, or anything of that nature?
My understanding is, is no. And my further understanding is that there has never been a, a call that resort, resulted in some kind of violation or citation of county code or, or operating procedures. And I also note, this is a special use permit. So if we don't meet these conditions, then this body has the ability to revoke this use permit.
And, and I'm aware of that, and I appreciate you, you know, bringing that up, because the conditions are important. And I think your neighborhood response program and being proactive, having someone stay there, and really taking the neighbors as being a good neighbor, I mean, it really comes down to not impacting their life as well. I realize, and everyone, as Commissioner Garcia even articulated, believes in providing support for the mission of Safe Embrace. But the reality is, there are neighbors there that are living, and although they too have gone on the record, it's not against the mission of Safe Embrace, it's their livelihood and their quality of life. And so I'm going to throw something out in terms of some of the security concerns, even though you have security cameras. And I too have drove, I've drove by that location several times. I'm glad just to hear about the landscaping, because it is noticeably different. That location on the corner, I think, bodes well, though, for its location, because it's literally on the corner, you have to drive into the neighborhood to actually, you know, be further in. So I think there's a opportunity to have its location meet the suitability and the, and, well, I'm going to use four findings, because we're not in a military situation. But I, I do think consideration for the 20-minute response time is a long time. And even though there's only been two incidents, I wonder if there's an opportunity to look at Safe Embrace working with, you know, a local alarm company or a local company to come out, or a security company that, given the 20-minute, and I don't know if that can be verified, by the way, the 20-minute response time, I'm not really sure. But if in fact it is, that's a long time. A lot can happen in that period of time. Not that a lot can't happen in a three-minute response time, but I do think that that is something that maybe could be considered in the neighborhood response piece of assuring the security of the entire neighborhood is at the front, you know, forefront. So it's, it's a thought that I wanted to throw out for consideration, given that you have looked at security, you've looked at upgrading the cameras, you've looked at having somebody on site, having regular communication and meetings with the neighbors, and addressing any of their concerns, are all at least forward-looking in terms of trying to have a revolution, a resolution of conflict management. So it was just something I was going to throw out, if in fact that is such a long response time.
Commissioner, thank you for the question, and certainly very relevant, because an emergency response plan is required for this type of facility. And just pulling right from code, it says the applicant shall prepare and file an emergency response plan with all local emergency security providers, police, fire, ambulance, evacuation procedures, et cetera. And so it's a requirement. If we don't do it, our use permit can be pulled. But what I'll commit to is, we'll put on our weekly agenda with the neighbors this plan, and get some feedback from them of how we think we should be creating this plan with their input for submittal to the emergency providers. So you hit the nail on the head, it is a legal requirement to do so.
Thank you. I appreciate you sharing that. I think that's a, a comfort. I also want to thank you also for the dogs, because I think we've all experienced that. And so not having them out at night, I think, is, again, a good faith effort. There's a lot of mending that certainly appears that needs to be in place, from what we're hearing. And I think, you know, creating that is really going to be a lot on y'all, because the neighbors have been dealing with this for a long time. So I appreciate all of your efforts to be consistent, trustworthy, credible, follow-through, to ensure that all the things that we're hearing are in fact going to be executed. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And the whole Safe Embrace executive team is here and is, is hearing this from you as well, of how important that is. So thank you.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I appreciate Mr. Gordon telling us about the sheriff's calls, but I think we, I need to verify that with the sheriff at, at a later date. We need to find out how many calls have been made out there. Also, when I ask about the capacity, the gallons of the, the septic system, I heard somebody shout out 4,000 gallons. I want to see if the, if the county is aware of that, when the county, and the reason I keep bringing up the septic, it was in the very first paragraph of this. So I'd like to hear, who knows the gallons capacity of the septic there?
This is Julia Olander for Planning and Building. James English from the Health Department is here, and possibly he could respond to that question.
Sure, sure. Just like to get a number. I spent four hours with a septic truck yesterday, so now I'm a kind of a subject matter expert for a couple of minutes. And thanks to Dave Solero for recommending the Waters Pumping Service. Thanks, Dave.
Good afternoon, I believe it's afternoon now. James English, for the record, with Northern Nevada Public Health, the Health District. So this septic system is actually permitted by the state of Nevada, so we ensure it has proper permitting before we'd sign off on a business license or the special use. Hence, the way this special use permit is actually written, the state of Nevada issued the permit, it is a 4,000-gallon system. They use a different model for how they determine sizing, which is actually on fixture counts, unlike the Health District. They're looking at the number of sinks, the number of toilets in the facility itself when it comes to commercial septic systems. We strictly do residential septic systems in Washoe County, and they're based on bedroom count, which is based on really the number of people we expect normally to live in a home. Hence why we sometimes get worried about some of the large Airbnbs that are out there. But it is a 4,000-gallon system. I have asked the state of Nevada for the actual permit and the conditions. That permit has a general operating conditions that I have not actually seen recently, so I don't want to speak to that, but it should have a pumping frequency and a maintenance frequency. The Health District's only concern related to the existing septic system was the conditions I put in the special use application, which is to make everyone aware that if that system fails, because it is in the backyard under concrete, the repair system would go in the front yard. Hence, that driveway would have to be ripped out, and that parking would be a thing of the past, which is the only concern for the Health District, and we are looking for planning and the applicant to agree to that. Because you can't actually, the existing septic system probably shouldn't be under concrete, as it currently is in the backyard, because it affects sometimes the operation. But the heavy vehicle traffic and parking on top of it causes compaction, and hence septic systems don't typically last as long. So that is really the Health District's main concern there. And we are pushing really hard for some sort of a grant, or maybe ARPA funding, if anything's left over. I know you heard about that earlier this morning, to drag sewer up that street and resolve all the issues and have it available, as other systems may or may not fail in that neighborhood at some point in time.
Sure. And thank you. Thank you for those answers. And then again, you've got traffic, possibly, and so unintended consequences are something to think about. If the first system fails, and you have to put in the second system, and the second system goes out in the front, and the parking goes away, also the trees that might be planted in the front, the tree roots will eventually cause the leach lines to fail, blah, 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 on and on and on. You see where this is going. And, and so those are concerns, and they happen, and it isn't just, you know, by chance. It's, and so I wanted to know, and, and you said that the state monitors the, the pumping of that as well?
The state has a general operating permit, as it does with all commercial septic systems, and they would have frequency of pumping and reporting requirements.
Very good. Thank you. Good to know.
Thank you. Any other board questions or comments at this time? Okay, well, I, I heard loud and clear from the DA's office that we really need to be looking at the findings today. And looking at the findings, I, I see that this meets the four findings that we're, we're asked to look at as a board. Additionally, to the neighbors, I, I'm so sorry that this has been such a difficult situation. The sphere of influence situation that we have in our community really needs to be fixed. And I look to my commissioners, who are on the Chucky Meadows Regional Planning Board, to work on that, because that is something that plagues another part of my district as well, and creates a lot of uncertainty and questions when applying for any permits, and confusion. And so the one thing that gives me solace is that there's concerns that the community has had, the SUP will require a lot more conditions, a lot more follow-up by Safe Embrace to ensure that they can, they can operate this facility and work with the neighbors. And this board can revoke that permit. I've been on this board almost three years now. We have revoked a special use permit. Commissioner, or Vice Chair Herman and I are the only ones that have done that while on this board, but it has been done. And this board looks at those things very seriously. And so for me today, I, I will be looking to approve this case number, but I, I want to hear from the rest of the board, but that, that's where I stand today. Commissioner Clark?
One, one, I hope it's the one final question. When you, when you have meetings, and I'm just throwing this out to whoever wants to answer, when you have meetings with, with the, the neighbors weekly, or how often you have that? If the neighbors have concerns and their concerns aren't addressed, what recourse do they have?
There's been no gauge.
They're talking about, they're talking about, they're talking about reaching out to you in the future, is that the way I understood it?
For the record, Garrett Gordon, thank you for the question, Commissioner. Yeah, our condition would be this neighborhood response program, which is in code, along with that emergency plan, which is in code. So if the neighbors believe that we are not meeting with them and complying with code, then they could make a formal complaint to the county, and this use permit could come up for a revocation proceeding in front of you, and it'd be up and come upon means Safe Embrace to convince you that we are in compliance with code. So there's definitely a remedy for them if we're not satisfying their concerns-- So there's definitely a remedy for them if we're not satisfying their concerns and the legal requirements.
Thank you. I wanted them to hear that on the record, that their recourse, if things don't go as predicted, that you can come back to us and bring it to our attention.
And this is Julie Olender with Planning and Building. Just for the record, also, there is, in Article 322, a specific requirement for the neighborhood response program. And as Mr. Gordon spoke, it speaks to that specifically. So again, if the neighbors are finding that Safe Embrace is not responding correctly, they have an avenue to contact through code enforcement or through planning that they are not satisfied with the neighborhood response program. So because it's in code, then it can be responded to even quicker than maybe some other kind of program that might be set up, just as a neighborhood response program that's not in code.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to point out for the record, because I heard some statements coming, that there haven't been discussions with the neighbors. It is important to recognize that this matter has been in litigation for several years. It is pretty common for attorneys to not want clients to speak to each other during the pendency of litigation, because it can affect it. So I'm not saying that is what happened here, but I'm saying it's quite possible, and that would not be uncommon advice.
Thank you, DA Kanderas. Looking to any other board questions or comments? Commissioner Andrew Ola?
I don't have any additional comments, other than to really, again, reiterate that we're here to look at the findings. And from my perspective, those findings have all been met. And when Madam Chair is ready, I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay. I think I'm ready, unless other members, okay. It looks like we're ready. Commissioner Andrew Ola?
So I move to approve a special use permit, case number WSUP 22-0019, Safe Embrace, amending to 21 occupants, if connected to sewer, and adhering to all the conditions of operations as outlined, having made the findings required by WCC Section 110.810.30, or the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrew Ola. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. With motions, second, any questions or comments by the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And...
I've got an error.
I have an error also.
Are y'all, can...
We're logged out.
Login there.
Verbal yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Two verbal yeses. So, all right, that motion passes five to zero. Thank you, everyone, for your time. And this is the end of our scheduled public hearings. We will now move into item 13, public comment. Mr. Manager?
Item 13 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you. Manager Brown. Now, Madam Clerk?
First up, we have Penny Brock, followed by Roger Edwards.
Thank you.
Please put my comments in the record for NRS. In mid-November, we had breaking news, it's all over the internet. I have a little clipping out of Newsweek. It was breaking, a federal judge appointed by Obama just ruled against voting machines in Georgia. The machine cybersecurity flaws violate the constitutional rights of voters. U.S. District Judge Amy Totenberg issued a 135-page ruling last Friday in the long-running lawsuit seeking to rid Georgia of its electronic voting machines in favor of hand-marked ballots. The point is, in Nevada, the county commission has the right that our voting will be done by paper ballots and hand-count, and no Dominion voting machines or any other electronic. This legislative session, the legislature took up AB 242, which would have outlawed the right of paper ballots and hand-counting. This was done because Nye County, in 2022, their county commission or board supervisors voted that their county would vote by paper ballots and no Dominion voting machines. The Democrats were furious, so they introduced AB 242, because the legislature was controlled by the Democrats. Of course, it passed both houses. When it reached our Republican governor's desk, he vetoed it. He supports the right of the counties to decide how they will vote. So I am here to ask, and to go on the record, and we've been here many times, asking that our 2024 elections and all elections moving forward be by paper ballots, hand-count the ballots in the precincts, and no Dominion voting machines. So what we have now is we have the queen of mail-in ballots heading as an election consultant in our voter register office. Depending on the outcome of this Georgia judge, the state of electronic voting machines is in question. You may face giving us paper ballots next year. We're going to watch this very closely. It's being watched very closely. Like I said, if you Google it, it's all over the internet. This is big news. So I just wanted to make you aware, to be mindful of that. And again, we in Washoe County want to vote with paper ballots, hand-count ballots.
Thank you.
Roger Edwards, followed by Janet Butcher.
Good afternoon. Roger Edwards, for the record. I promise this the last time I bug you, because it's the last time I can bug you. Anyway, I have to agree with Ms. Penny Brock. We need to somehow pull back the integrity of our voting system. If it's not through paper ballots with signature verification, we might as well just give it up, you know? Anybody that can just jam a ballot with anybody's no-name verification on it in a box, anyway. Yeah, I'm one of those guys who carries these ancient torches. Golden Valley was one of those things that we went on for all these years, and it still hasn't been resolved. But anyway, any of those folks who don't remember what went on with Swan Lake in Lemon Valley needs to review the record. I know Jean does. She was in at Eyeball Deep, but nobody wants to be around that lake, Eyeball Deep, I guarantee you that. And like she said, they are using dangerous level effluent on the alfalfa fields. That was an attempt to lower the level of the lake. But, you know, you have discretionary funds like DARPA and stuff, and I've been to all the libraries. They don't need remodeling. But you really need to remodel the septic system up there, or add a septic sewer system up there instead. And, you know, once in a while, you guys have group meetings with the other entities. And so there's no infighting between, whether it's Reno's, or it's the county's, or whatever, about police using discretionary funds like DARPA and so forth for expansion of the dead sewer treatment plant, so that effluent is not going into Swan Lake. We live in the mountains. Sewer, there's only so many rivers and so many lakes that it can go to. And I know it has to be treated before it goes into the pyramid, because of the Indian agreements. But Swan Lake's our own little sewer. And please look at using discretionary funds to remedy the disaster going on at Swan Lake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Butcher, followed by Katie Nepper.
Janet Butcher, for the record. Please enter my comments, verbatim, per NRS. Interesting that it took all that time and effort, and obviously, probably money, for two more people to be housed. Again, I'm going to go back to, why don't we spend some of this money that you guys love to spend? Why don't we spend it in creating more homes for those people who are in a domestic violence I hope that as a couple people are coming up for election, people take a look at how you can change something in somebody's neighborhood. Like I've talked about before, about rezoning. When you buy a house in a residential area, you expect it to be residential. And unfortunately, sometimes the commissioners come through, and they put a warehouse right next to your house. I'd also like to address this block voting. I tried that at home. I got a new diamond ring. I know you want to shorten your meetings, I mean, but I just don't understand this. I'm still waiting for Commissioner Herman's election integrity to be brought. It's coming up, and we're going to be having elections pretty soon. And we still haven't gotten this thing ironed out. And then, last but not least, I'd like to use, the word of the day is caucus. The Republicans will be doing a caucus. The PPP means nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Nepper, followed by Marvis Butel.
First of all, Julie was incorrect on the detached garage, and she knew it. Senate for said it before. I have it on the phone, on the email. It was Washoe County building permit that converted the remainder of the existing detached garage into secure storage area with the bathroom permit. Secure storage area. And then, all of a sudden, it ends up being a kids' club. There's no permit for it. It's not permitted. Second of all, Mr. Large said, he didn't know what Sparks would have done with it if it had gone where we had the public hearing. Well, that was not true, because he was in court with the rest of us when City of Sparks said, "Well, if it had gone to us, then it couldn't have been approved, because it's not allowed in any area in residential in the City of Sparks." You can check it, you can ask him that. I'm not lying. A lot of people here have. Rules are the rules. You say that so many times, rules are the rules. We pointed out all the inaccuracies. Just one of them would deny this permit. Don't say the rules are the rules anymore unless you mean it. Because, just because it's to your advantage to say it, you say it, and then when it's not to your advantage, it's like, okay, who cares about the rules? You're swayed by a whole bunch of inaccuracies and falsifications. We spent thousands of hours on this in the last five years, thousands of hours, and everything we said was true. And yet, they go up and say, "Yeah, yeah, we did this. Yeah, yeah, we're going to do this. Yeah, yeah, all of this is done." They were a group care facility for over two years, and they didn't do any of it. Thank you so much. You can't fight people who lie. You just can't do it. So I'm sorry it came to this, and can't believe it was unanimous when we had every dang fact there was. They aren't habitable. It's not allowed in an LDS zone. And yes, they're sympathetic. Yeah. We all agree with that. But it can't be there. So I'm sorry it came to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marvis Butel?
I have been a neighbor of Safe Embrace for five years. And I have been a good neighbor, but they have been no kind of neighbor. And I just want you to know that they made no effort at all during those five years to fulfill anything that they were supposed to fulfill. And they would not even speak to me when I went to them with problems. And I'm the person who had the dog problems that kept coming up. And I loved the dogs. It was the dog's well-being that I was concerned about, because they weren't being taken care of. And they would tell me that they cannot talk to me, they cannot speak to me, I have to speak to an advocate. They would not tell me who the advocate was, they would not tell me how to get in touch with the advocate. My last incident with them, I went to the front door, because one of the dogs had been in the dog run, out in the hot summer sun for hours, whining, and I just wanted them to take it in. And they threatened me with the police, because I was trespassing on their property. And I want you to know, there's no trespassing sign posted on their property. They are not good neighbors, they have not been good neighbors, and they will not be good neighbors, because they have gotten away with breaking every rule under the sun. So thank you. I just wanted you to know what it's like living next to them.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, Mr. Manager, we're going to go on to item 14.
Item 14 is commissioners and county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Okay, I'm looking to the board. Do folks have anything this last? I'm not seeing anything?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Commissioner Clark?
I'd like to, I feel really bad for the folks that live in that neighborhood. We've got to figure out a better way to do something here. I'd like to see the county figure out a way to support Safe Embrace, and maybe find a better location, move them out of the residential area. I'm just, I voted for it because I knew that they could complain now, and I want them to bring, if they have complaints, and things don't get satisfied with your neighborhood meetings with them, I want you to contact me, and I'll be your voice up here. I'd hate to have you be in your situation, have a bunch of strange people living next door to me, and no real oversight. So hopefully you'll have that. I'm sorry that the City of Sparks put us in the position to have to vote on this. And I'm sorry that Safe Embrace couldn't find a better location in a more desirable spot. So I'm sorry we had to vote the way we did. Accept my apologies, please. Agenda items. I'd like to ask that we get in contact with the director, Tracy Bauer, from DRI Desert Research Institute. She'd like to make a presentation. It's my understanding, she's never made a presentation to this board. It's very prestigious, recognized throughout the world organization, Desert Research Institute. They've got relationships with numerous countries throughout the planet, and I think that us living in a desert, it's important to hear what they have to say. I met with her, spent about an hour and a half with her, and I'd like to see if she could get on the agenda to give us a presentation and explain what they do. Very interesting. Next, I'd like to get on the agenda, a vote to figure out if we can reduce the manager's spending limit back down to $100,000 from $300,000. I think that would be something that could probably help Manager Brown. He wouldn't have a target on him. People wouldn't be able to accuse him of anything. It's, I think it's incumbent upon the board to vote on contracts, especially over $100,000. We should all be on the record here, us on the dais, us elected by the citizens, and let the citizens see how we vote on contracts. We're spending the citizens' money. It's not my money, it's not the county's money, it's the citizens' money. And the citizens should have some recourse if they don't like how their money's being spent. And the recourse is unelectus if we do something that they don't like. That's what everybody should be dealing with on this dais, is if you don't represent your clients... if you don't represent your clients, I mean, we have a saying in the sales world. If you don't represent your customers, somebody else will. So we need to make sure that we get that back. I'd like to see that on the agenda and vote on that amount of contract limit. And I think, you know, there was some very good public comments today. And I thank everybody, even though they're gone from the room, that those that are still here, thank you for public comments. And thanks to the sheriff's deputy for protecting us here today. She's done a great job. Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Chair Herman?
Supervisor Hammer called me from the county above us. It's in California. And he suggested that we have a new commander from Hurlong to come and speak to us and bring us up to date on what they're doing there. I'd like to, just that we get him on the agenda soon.
Great idea. Thank you. Any other board comments, questions? Not seeing anything? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. We are adjourned.